Hello, everyone watching on Facebook. This is Rachel Gamble with Macon Bibb Public Affairs. We are getting set up to livestream tonight's pre-commission meeting, which is scheduled to start in just a few minutes at 5:00, and full commission meeting, which is scheduled to start at 6:00. We are currently getting the livestream up and running at maconbib.us. So you can let those without Facebook pages know they can watch this meeting live at maconbib.us. To all my commissioners and attendees on the line, if y'all just hold tight for a few minutes, we'll be getting started here shortly. We are now livestreaming on Facebook and our website. We'll be getting started here in just a couple of minutes at 5:00. Thank you. And Commissioners, Mayor Pro Tem Tillman and Commissioner Watkins, if you guys will connect your audio. It looks like the audio is not connected. I see now we've got Mayor Pro Tem's audio. Commissioner Watkins, we'll just need to hit that audio button.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Macon Bibb County Commission. This is the pre-commission meeting. And let me start with this notice out of an abundance of caution. The Macon Bibb County Commission meeting scheduled for Tuesday, July 21st. Both the pre-commission meeting and the regular commission meeting will be available to the Macon Bibb County Commissioners by video conference only. The commission chambers will be closed to the public and press in order to slow the spread of COVID-19. Therefore, the public and press may only access the meeting simultaneously online at www.maconbib.us Want to be sure that as we convene this pre-commission meeting, we have several items of new business to discuss. Therefore, we will be convening as a committee of the whole in order to discuss these new items of business on our agenda. Before we get to that, I would like for the clerk to call the role and be sure we have a quorum of the committee of the whole so that we can conduct business. As she calls your name, would you please unmute yourself and respond so that we can get a verbal response to confirm your attendance? Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem Tillman.
I'm here. Thank you.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Bivens.
Here.
Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Lucas. Commissioner Schlesinger.
Here.
Commissioner Shepherd. Commissioner Shepherd is trying to log on right now. Commissioner Watkins.
Here.
And Commissioner Wynn.
Got five commissioners on the line. I count for a quorum, so that would be six. So that's a bare minimum for a quorum. But as I say, we're expecting other commissioners to call in shortly. But let me read the agenda for tonight just so you'll know and have some appreciation for how to balance our time because we've got only one hour before we're supposed to begin our 6:00 meeting and a lot to do. We're going to have an update on the COVID-19 situation from Spencer Hawkins and a recap of the governor's most recent executive order, what it does say, what it doesn't say, along with perhaps some legal comments about the litigation that has resulted from his executive orders. Then we'll move into the consent agenda. There are three items of business on the consent agenda. They are all three ones that you have heard before and moved to table and to hold off. So we'll get to those three licenses just to see what your pleasure is as far as moving them forward to the meeting tonight or to continue to do additional diligence. As far as the new business is concerned, we want to have a discussion with you about the millage rate and the rollback rate that has been calculated and whether or not to accept the rollback or to maintain a constant millage rate that was consistent with last year. We want to have that conversation with you or at least broach that topic with you. Item B is an ordinance to appropriate $700,000 from fund balance for a public awareness campaign. This was discussed before and was kind of tabled, if you will, or delayed to a time certain so that an additional resolution could be prepared by the attorney's office regarding mandatory masking or mask, having to use masks. And that will be item C. Item D is a fairly straightforward amendment to the item that was changing the name of the tree commission to the tree board. Basically, Commissioner Lucas sponsored this and it was to eliminate confusion between commissioners there and commissioners here. But we decided that tree board sounded a little stilted and awkward. And so we have proposing an amendment to make it the Arbor Conservation Board rather than tree board, Arbor Conservation. So we'll talk about that a little bit later. And then finally, Commissioner Watkins has his small footprint scores and spacing of distance requirements. So we'll talk about that.
Why is it here? Because it passed the committee.
That's an amendment proposal.
Doesn't need to be. I was thinking that there was some sort of amendment or something that you had requested to.
The specialty shops.
Michael's got some additional information. Maybe it was just to change the name of a vice store. I don't know.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Michael, are you there?
Yeah. We can wait. That was, we added some language regarding specialty shops at the request of P&amp;Z. And so that's an amendment that proposes that.
Okay, so this is just an amendment to that before it goes, Commissioner Watkins. And then finally, there's a resolution to assure compliance with the Constitution of the Georgia by providing for direct annual tax efficient to help the Board of Education as they issue bonds on their ESPOLOs. And if the ESPOLOs didn't enough, that we agree to allow them to raise their millage rate because they have the authority, as I understand it, to set their millage, but only we have the authority to levy it. So they have to get our guarantee to be willing to levy it if they have to raise it to float their bond. So we'll get to that. So a lot of new business to take into account. Plus, we're supposed to review the agenda for tonight. What is, let me go now to Michael and to Spencer. Spencer, let me call on you first. What's the latest, please, sir, about the COVID situation and where we are with our phased compliance process?
I don't see Spencer on the meeting. I'm trying to reach out to him now.
Okay, then let me go to Michael. I'll put Michael kind of on the spot first and we'll try to get Spencer to do the COVID response a little later. Michael, how about a quick recap of the governor's most recent executive order and the litigation?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So July 15th, which was last Wednesday, Governor Kemp issued his third executive order entitled Empowering a Healthy Georgia. It took effect on Thursday, the 16th, and continues through July 31st. There was, it was very similar to the previous two orders. The only, only a couple of little changes to note. The first, there were some paragraphs added about schools. The school systems are given specific authority to require workers and students to wear face coverings indoors and on school property, ask for schools to enforce social distancing requirements, especially when they're exercising or singing or playing wood instruments. It calls on schools to reduce class sizes and use larger facilities like gyms for classroom space or auditoriums for classroom space to allow for better social distancing. And it directs schools to make sure their ventilation systems stay in good working order to increase air circulation as practicable. Governor Kemp also added a paragraph that says, I'm just going to read this verbatim. Pursuant to Code Section 38328, other than orders issued pursuant to the authority of Code Section 38360, which is the judicial emergency provisions, any state, county, or municipal law, ordinance, rule, or regulation that requires persons to wear face coverings, masks, face shields, or any other personal protective equipment while in places of public accommodation or on public property are suspended to the extent that they are more restrictive than this executive order. And the mayor mentioned a lawsuit on Wednesday or Thursday, I believe, of last week. The state sued the city of Atlanta. And I believe Mayor Bottoms was named in her official capacity as well. And the basis of that suit was to have the orders that Atlanta had issued, particularly requiring masks within the city limits, declared void. And there was also an injunction component to seeking to prohibit Mayor Bottoms from making statements to the press that the mask order that had been entered in the city of Atlanta had, you know, was enforceable and was lawful. And so that court matter was supposed to go to a hearing this morning before the Superior Court of Fulton County. But the judge assigned to that case recused herself within, I heard about it about 30 minutes before the hearing was supposed to go, but it may have been well before that. But, so I haven't heard when that hearing is going to happen on that. I also saw that the Georgia Municipal Association filed an amicus brief on behalf of the municipalities of the state of Georgia advocating for their position. Though I haven't had a chance to read through that brief. That just came through in the last hour, I believe. And one final note about the new executive order. Y'all may recall that a previous order, it was a while ago, I think a couple of months ago, extended the timeline for people to renew expiring weapons carry licenses. And this order further extends that time to 30 days after August 15th or within 120 days of whenever the license expires. So that catches you up on the governor's orders. The state of emergency is still set to expire on August 11th. And so we'll probably not see another order from the governor until middle of next week.
Mr. Mayor, I have information from EMA.
And I'm told, Mayor Pro Tem, I'm told Spencer Hawkins is on the line.
Yes, yes, sir.
Do you want to go before him or do you want to let Spencer go ahead and then you?
No, no.
Huh?
That was me, county manager.
Spencer, are you there?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought that was Mayor Pro Tem, Dr. Martin. Was that you?
It was, but Spencer's here. Go ahead, Spencer.
Yes.
Spencer.
Yes, sir.
Give us a COVID update and where we are and also on our phased implementation of COVID prevention measures.
Yes, sir. Well, right now, we are continuing to, once again, closely monitor this situation like everyone is. According to the North Central Health District, their operational briefing that they released this morning, we've had a pretty significant increase for the week of June 29th through July the 12th. We are up 113% in newly confirmed COVID cases within Macon Bibb County. One of the things that we were seeing previous to this increase that we've seen over the last couple of weeks is that it was in congregate settings. But what they're seeing now is that these increases cannot solely be attributed to congregate settings, but there's still congregate setting outbreaks. And as of today, the latest GMA briefing has Macon Bibb County at 80 new cases within the last 24 hours. And we're still holding, we have been for the last four or five days, at 44 fatalities, unfortunately. And as far as our phased approach, because we did hit the threshold that we set for ourselves of more than 50 cases along the moving average for more than five days, we have moved into phase three, which, once again, first and foremost, we are strongly encouraging all of our employees and citizens to wear masks whenever possible. We're looking to, as much as possible, close the public walk-in to county buildings and have departments move to appointments only for their meetings. And then we've also moved for reservations for facilities are now going to be canceled on a month-by-month basis based on the situation that we're seeing within COVID. So the first cancellation timeframe that we have is going to be July 26th through August 25th. And then on August 11th, before that month expires, we're going to reassess what the COVID situation looks like and make a decision for the next potential closure date of August 26th through September 25th.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
If any commissioner would like to have a copy of the restrictions that we're trying to implement or the actions that we're trying to implement in phase one, phase two, now phase three, correct, Spencer? We're in phase three?
Yes, sir, phase three.
And Spencer, out of an abundance of caution, is in the process of drafting, heaven forbid, the phase four and even phase five based on increasing numbers. But that's not ready for publication yet. But we're trying to work on that to see what we would do. But if any commissioner has questions about, you know, what facilities are closed, what we're not providing, what we're all providing, Spencer can provide that information to you. Are there any questions at this point about any of that? Or do you want to just get the copy from the?
Ms. Lucas has a question.
Commissioner Lucas, I understand you have a question.
Thank you.
Ma'am, I can't, I'm sorry.
Can you not see me?
Well, I can now. You're on my second screen. I was looking at the first screen.
Oh, okay.
And I need to swipe over to see you.
Okay.
Now, I got you.
Thank you.
What I think I'll do, what I think I'll do is put everybody on this speaker mode so that the one that's speaking is the one that shows up. So you can get my attention that way.
Okay, I wanted to ask if the attorney can explain to us what the amicus brief means because some of you are attorneys and you know. I have kind of a feeling because it's been discussed recently with the Board of Health. But if we could get an explanation of what GMA filed, if we understood it was an amicus brief, and I'd like for that to be explained. And the other thing, Ms. Mayor and fellow commissioners, Mr. Chris Savadawa with the Board of Health as the spokesperson for the Board of Health is with us also in this meeting. And he would like to present some information while we're talking about this, some information from the Board of Health, if that is okay.
We are pressed for time.
I understand, but I think this is very important.
And if he'll limit his time, please, ma'am, that would be helpful.
I think he can do that.
Commissioner, you want me to go ahead and explain the GMA brief first?
Yeah, that was what I.
Okay. Yeah, as Michael alluded to, there's a lawsuit in Atlanta between Governor Kemp and the mayor of Atlanta as well as the city council of Atlanta. And it centers around their action to mandate masks. And some other things too. It's not just that. And he has filed a lawsuit up there saying that they can't do that. They exceeded their authority because his executive order passed under the Emergency Management Act says you can't do anything inconsistent. And inconsistent means different in his order. The Georgia Municipal Association filed a brief this morning at 9:08. And I just got a copy of it about an hour ago, but I've skimmed it. And I know enough about the issues to be able to give you a 10,000-foot view. What the GMA or the Georgia Municipal Association says is that they are taking the side at this point of the city of Atlanta in saying that the mayor, I mean, I'm sorry, the governor has exceeded his authority with respect to his executive orders. They say that his statement in his executive order that a municipality, local government's order inconsistent with his, being different from his, is a overreach of his authority. They said that's a judge to decide what is inconsistent. That's number one. That's their first argument. They then argue that their order in Atlanta is actually a supplementation of and not inconsistent with the governor's order. The statute that gives him the authority to issue these orders says that local governments can supplement his orders as long as they're consistent with. And that the city of Atlanta is saying that they're not actually inconsistent with it. They're just taking it a little further and being consistent with, but supplementing his order. So that's their second argument. And then they argue that under the Home Rule Act that govern, that we have certain home rule powers, local governments, to do certain things, including emergency powers to protect the health and welfare of our citizens. And they're saying he overreached by preventing local governments from acting on their own in certain ways. That is a generalization of all the arguments, but that's what they filed this morning. And as Michael said, there's not been a hearing scheduled yet on the.
I have a quick question. Does the ACC, is the Association of County Commissioners come out with anything?
Not, I don't know. But I don't know they haven't. I don't know that they had. I don't think, I think I know that, but I don't think they have. It's just the GMA right now. So it's a heated contest on those two sides in terms of what the governor's powers are versus what local government's powers are.
Okay. Now, Mr. Savadawa, thank you because I don't know. Maybe everybody knew what that was and what it involved. But I wanted to hear it and then the public to hear it as well. But Mr. Savadawa from the Board of Health was designated as a spokesperson. And he's here, Mr. Mayor, to give just a brief overview of what the Board of Health is. We've met several times and taken some very definitive action. Then you, would you?
Sure. I'll be very brief, Commissioners and Mayor. You received a resolution in our recommendation of support for a local mask mandate July 11th. And that resolution was drafted pursuant to the powers and functions of the Board of Health. And we wanted to reach out today and just reaffirm that this is not only our assessment, but conviction that moving forward with the local mask ordinance is necessary as an additional preventative measure for the health and the well-being of our community. This issue about local oversight is imperative. You know, it's all matters before the Board of Health. For many years, we've continued to assert local input, local oversight where appropriate and reaffirm that this is a very important time to do that. We ask that you continue in your discussion and debate today to carefully consider the proposals that are in front of you that have been sponsored and supported by my colleagues on the Board of Health. And we are prepared to cooperate with the execution of anything that you move forward with today. As recently as yesterday, we've also taken additional measures to allocate funds in support of an awareness campaign referenced in one of the proposals before you today and have allocated emergency funding for masks intended for distribution to the public where needed. We continue to see the public respond in the absence of resources made available by the government in hosting of public drives for masks and also in reaching out to us, sharing their concerns about the pandemic. And so we will be prepared to stand and support you as you pursue an appropriate mask mandate. But we also reserve the authority to pursue all avenues left for the Board of Health. This issue is a significant concern to all the members and the constituents that we represent.
Thank you, Mr. Savadawa. I appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, a question. If that, I mean, we already voted on this and the language did not call for a mandate. My question to Mr. Savadia because we have Commissioner Lucas and Allen. So, you know, so my question then is, why haven't y'all joined in the lawsuit with Keisha Lance Bottom and sued the governor? Why haven't y'all done that? If y'all supported, y'all got funding, why come to us about it? Why haven't y'all already taken those steps?
The reason is that.
You said he's the spokesperson because you and Commissioner Allen is already on here to speak up for the board. So if he's the spokesperson, I'm asking him. Now, you can answer it, so then we don't need him if you're going to speak on it.
I will allow him to answer.
He's the spokesperson today.
I will allow him to answer it.
Sure. I'm happy to tell you that we are considering all options available to the board. Those discussions have been a part of our deliberation. And according to the statute, the expectation of the Board of Health is to provide insight, advocacy, and recommendations to its local jurisdiction. And we're giving the county commission and the mayor the right of first refusal essentially as our duly appointed representatives in the jurisdiction of Macon Bibb. Now, in the effort that you put forth, we hope an outcome is consistent with our recommendation. If it doesn't, we are looking at other options.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, let's move on so we can actually get to that item on the agenda. Thank you very much, Mr. Savadawa and Pro Tem. I appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, can we amend that to then say that we move to mandate masks in Macon Bibb?
When we get to it. It's certainly there for amendment. But let me see if I can't proceed with the agenda and the order that I've got. What do y'all want to do about the consent agenda, which is the next item on the agenda? You got three alcohol licenses that are pending and that are awaiting approval.
Can we move to the items that are concerning the COVID and the masks? We're talking and that's what we're doing right now?
I would move that we go ahead and approve on the consent agenda.
Well. As I understand it, we've got a couple of people that have been invited to call in and are in the meeting that are with the applicants for these alcohol licenses. At least I understand that they're on the line. That's why I was just going to move to that first. If you want to make a motion to skip over the consent agenda for now and go to the COVID items, we can do that as well. I'm just trying to facilitate a meeting and get it over with in the next 35 minutes.
Well, but so moved, I'm moved that we talk about the COVID is infinitely more important.
Okay, is the objection to going straight to the COVID matter? And if so, you want to take item B under the new business 5B, which is the ordinance to appropriate $700,000 from fund balance for the public awareness? And then the next one is the emergency ordinance requiring the use of face covering. But that sued everybody to do that? What do you want to do about the $700,000? But that suited everybody to do that. What do you want to do about the $700,000?
Move to approve.
Second. On the 700, are like physical items like actually buying face masks, an option for that?
Michael has all that information. Yeah, my impression is that all the face masking has been separated out of that ordinance, and it's basically just the $700,000 for public service announcements. Michael?
That's correct, Mayor. This is for a public awareness campaign. Chris Flor put together an estimated monthly cost from basically every media outlet that he could get a hold of in Macon Bibb, and that cost came out to about $140,000 per month. And so this is 140,000 per month for five months, because the CARES Act funding expires on December 30th of 2020. And so based on the idea that we didn't want to spend any money beyond the CARES Act funding expiration date, that's the timeline, 140,000 a month for public awareness, radio, internet, print, television, marketing through December 30th.
Okay, so I guess my question though is, can we amend that in some way that the sponsors would allow it to make sure that the purchase of, you know, PPE equipment can be done within that?
I think you're going to need more money.
Mr. Mayor? Please know that we are making expenditures from, I guess to call it a COVID account. So we are buying supplies, we are buying PPE, hopefully be reimbursed with the money coming from the state. So we are making those purchases. As of right now, we are, no department is laughing.
I guess I was thinking just as part of your public service awareness, you could, you know, provide free masks to members of the general public. It's like 100,000 people that pay us taxes, you know? I was just thinking, if you shaved a month of your public awareness campaign, $140,000 worth of, you know, 20 cent mask could go a long way to people who say I don't have.
We are anticipating that. We are anticipating, once we get the guidelines from the governors, from the CARES money, that we are going to put together a plan, because some of that does count to go to citizens and in the community. So we are going to be working on that, but this part here is to focus primarily on education.
Right. Okay, I'll move on.
Okay, I got a motion and a second to approve the ordinance to appropriate $700,000 from fund balance for a public awareness campaign. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of that ordinance, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it. That'll be item V on our agenda for later this evening in the full meeting. Now, let's go to the new ordinance that has been drafted by legal, requiring the use of face coverings. And I'll turn this over to Michael. Or Michael, are you the one that can talk to us about this ordinance?
Duke, did you want to take this one?
Duke? We split this up from the last, the last time they combined them. And so you've already voted on the first one, which is the public awareness thing. And this ordinance that is before you in 5C is a mask mandate. And what it would, I know you've had, I don't know if you've had time to read it or not, but the bottom line is it would require that all residents and visitors in Macon Bibb County are ordered to wear a face covering over both the nose and mouth at all times, while it's practicable while outside their homes or places of residence. And what that means is, and it's defined in here, practicable means when visiting any commercial establishment, government office, or other enclosed location in which persons not residing in the same household or place of residence or present at the same time, when working at any commercial establishment, government office, or other enclosed location in which persons are not residing in the same household or place of residence or within six feet or moving in such a way to be within six feet of each other, at any other place within Bibb County outside of such person's household, or their personal vehicle. So if they're in a personal vehicle, you can, you don't have to wear a mask under this ordinance. The exceptions to, in other words, when you don't have to wear a mask would be if you're under 10 years of age, if you're in a personal vehicle or other enclosed space occupied only by persons who live in the same household or place of residence. So if you're driving with your family, you would not be required to wear a mask. When you're exercising outdoors, you would not be required under this ordinance to wear a mask. When eating, drinking, or smoking, when wearing a mask materially causes or aggravates a health condition, or when wearing a mask covering would prevent the receipt of personal services, such as dental, medical care services, things like that. So a violation of it would be not be, it'd be a fine. If you violated it and you were cited for not wearing a face covering and you were supposed to, and if this ordinance passed, you would be fined $25 for the first offense, $50 for the second offense, and not more than $100 for the third offense. So it does require for fines to pay to the municipal court of Macon Bibb County. And that's the substance of it. It's very similar, to give you background, that's very similar to Athens Clark County that passed similar ordinance, Savannah passed a similar ordinance, and of course, we just discussed Atlanta. So there may be three. I know there may be one more. That's all, Commissioner Win. Mayor, Commissioner Win.
Can you not?
Commissioner Win, hey. No, I'm sorry. Again, I've got my screen set on active speaker, so I can see you now.
All right. Well, I just, the thing is, you're calling this a requirement, and it's just slightly short of being a mandate. That's the way I hear it. And again, I don't see how you can, everything you said was that we should wear masks everywhere, but in our own home or in our car while driving with our family. Now, how are you going to monitor who's in the car with somebody, whether that's family or not? I just, here's my whole problem with this. I am a mask wearer. That's what I do when I go in public buildings. I think that's a smart thing to do, and I consider myself a smart person. But I was in some stores this weekend, and 50% of the people didn't have masks on. That store, and then I went to another store, and it required masks. So I had my mask on, but they wouldn't let the customer in behind me in the store until they went and got a mask. Now, the stores can control that, but I don't see how we can control it. I don't see how we can fine people for something that the state's not requiring us to do. We're not following the state regulation on this, or the state or the governor's orders on this. I just don't see how you can do that and how you can enforce what we're going to do with this. I just don't get it. I mean, you charge, if you fine me $25, I'm not going to pay it. Okay?
Let me see if I got a motion and a second for this before we have further discussion.
Yeah, that's, and I'd like to second it. And may I have a question, ask a question?
So my motion was from Schlesinger, is that right?
Right. And.
And Lucas was my second. So further discussion, Commissioner Lucas.
Thank you. And since I've requested that we use Athens Clark as the, I'd like to join, is Commissioner Allen going to be the major sponsor on it? You still sponsoring this?
Yeah.
Commissioner?
Commissioner Lucas, Commissioner Allen is listed as a sponsor, but if you want me to.
Okay, I just want it to be added as a sponsor and request that all commissioners who favor this would also sign on as co-sponsors of this important legislation. As you have heard from our Board of Health, from our emergency management and everybody else, how important it is. And looks like we may be right. We may get through and be able to mandate this. So I certainly do want my name on that, because it's very important, very.
What's the verbiage on it again before I sponsor a mandate?
Yeah, this, one more time. The, Commissioner Allen, I think your last, your last resolution or your last proposal ordinance was strongly encouraged it.
Yes.
Yeah, but this would mandate it. This is now mandated. I want to be clear about.
I want it strongly encouraged.
Well, I want to be the sponsor on that.
Make sure we got the same.
Is it a mandate or a requirement? There's a little bit difference in there.
It sure is.
And I want to say this, that there was a rally for one of the mayoral candidates at this government center today, and there was at least one person that didn't have a mask on, and I won't say her name. If you're mandating, or you're trying to mandate masks, you need to follow the rules.
So here's what exactly it says. It says that all residents and visitors are ordered to wear, ordered to wear, coverings, both nose and mouth at all times, while practicable while outside their homes or places of residence, subject to the exceptions of the red.
Did you miss, misunderstood? I see it strongly. I'm sorry.
Okay, obviously, it's a different one, so I would like to be the sponsor on that and would welcome anybody else who wishes to co-sponsor that, because it's obvious that Commissioner Allen is not in sync with this. So I would like to be placed as the major sponsor, and we've already had a motion and second to approve it.
If I can just clarify real quick, the reason why it lists Commissioner Allen as the sponsor is because it's an amendment to an ordinance that he proposed. And so the listing of his name is because he's the one that introduced the legislation originally. He didn't introduce the amendment, but he introduced the original legislation. So that's just why it's before the commission at all.
What I'm hearing him, what I'm hearing him say, and to commit, correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Allen, is he does not support, or at least he doesn't want to sponsor the ordinance that orders face coverings. He would. Okay, that's fine. That's okay.
And he's on the Board of Health.
Well, and that's what we're talking about right now. That would be ordering a face cover.
Today, so don't be taken.
Everybody else was.
Motion and second, it's a discussion.
Okay. All right, so we do have a motion and a second for this by Schlesinger and Lucas. Is there further discussion? If not, all in favor of putting this on the agenda for tonight for final action? By saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no?
No.
The ayes appear to have it, so we'll put it on the agenda for tonight as item W under Old Business, and I'm sure we'll have an additional discussion about it then. Now, can I go back up and pick up the alcohol licenses? Because I'd like to try to get some resolution of whether they're going to be on the consent agenda or not. As you may remember, these three applications that have been pending are number one by Yogi Mahat 2020 LLC doing businesses, the Ford Hawkins Package Store. It is for liquor, beer, and wine, package sales to go. It is an existing location. This is a change of ownership and or change of agent is the reason it's before us tonight. The second is by Janil 2015 Incorporated doing businesses, Neighborhood Gas and Grocery located at 3102 Napier Avenue. It's for beer and wine, package sales to go at that location. And the final one is by Exxon 2311 LLC doing businesses, Exxon Food Mart located at 2311 Pineona Avenue. It is for beer, package sales to go at that location. I need to know what's your pleasure, what you want to do about these three alcohol licenses?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mayor.
On the one on Emery Highway, my major concern was that there have been a number of people who've complained about the trash there, and there is a church. And I don't know how the measurement was done, but I'm concerned about the distance from that establishment and the church. And I just want to be assured that with a new owner, that the place would be cleaned up, that there would not be trash all over the location there. That also, and I would also like for our traffic folks to go out and take a look at that area, because there is a street that comes right out in front of that establishment onto Emery Highway. The traffic is very, very fast in there, so I'd like for us maybe to put something there, because there are children that take that shortcut rather than go into a crosswalk. They're darting from there out, and we have had a number of accidents there and a number of people who have been run over, who have been hit and hurt very badly in there. So that was why I wanted to hold it up, so that we could take a look at it and request that the new owners pay attention to that and work with us on making sure they do whatever they can, especially about keeping the area clean, and then maybe we can work with them on the traffic situations in there.
Right. And Michael, I may call on you. My understanding is that this location does not comply with the distance requirements, because it doesn't have the specified distance apart from a public housing project. And I think Michael looked this, right, Michael looked this up and decided for some reason or somehow that when the license was issued, the public housing project wasn't there. And the public housing project located afterward is my understanding. Therefore, the location was grandfathered, and this is a continuation of that grandfather, because it's been an existing license and an ongoing license. Michael, is that right?
That's my understanding, Mayor, and that was the statement that engineering provided to us when they did the measurements, just that there had been a package store there for a very long time, and so it's protected by the legacy provisions.
Mayor? Okay. And I understand that the applicant, Mr. Patel, is on the call with us. Mr. Patel, have you heard the comments of Commissioner Lucas, and you may have to unmute yourself so that we can hear you?
So far, I got everything cleaned up. If you guys stop by now, you can see it. I got a bigger dumpster. I got cameras outside. I don't let people hang out there anymore. So a lot of that has changed.
Good, good, good. That's great. Can that be a part of?
Come on and check it out.
I will. Now, it's in Commissioner Schlesinger's district, but it was in my previous ward when I was on the city council. That's why I know the history on it, and a lot of people still call me, because I used to represent that area as a part of the old ward system. But there have been a number of things going on in there for a long time, and we need to make sure before issuing that, that some of those things are rectified, and that's what I wanted to do by holding it up.
I got you, man.
It sounds to me, Commissioner Lucas, like Mr. Patel is more than willing to cooperate and try to keep the place picked up and work with us on your issues of concern. Is there any other concern about the issuance of this license? If not, can I get a motion to approve this license?
No move. Second.
Got a motion by Schlesinger. Can I get a second?
Second.
By Lucas, second by Lucas, further conversation? Hearing none, all in favor of putting this on the agenda tonight, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no? Okay, it'll be on the consent agenda. What is your preference now about Janil 2015 doing businesses, Neighborhood Gas and Grocery at 3102 Napier Avenue, beer and wine, package sales to go at that location, and the Exxon 2311 LLC located at 2311 Pineona for beer package sales to go? What's your preference there?
So, and I'll speak on that one if I may.
All right, sir.
So my issues aren't as localized and specific to what Commissioner Lucas was just speaking of. But there is a general sentiment in the community that. But there is a general sentiment in the community that there are a lot of oversaturation of the same type of store offering very few goods and products and staying open very late. The laws as written currently in Bibb County don't adequately address that and I I understand that. And I plan his own and done do a great job, but it remains to be a problem. So I guess my one of my questions, what what type of product at the either Exxon or other other location are you intending to sell? And what are the proposed hours of operation? Because I understand that a lot of these times that you're opening up relatively close relatively close to a residential area and traffic inflow and noise can be an issue as well. So if anything, I would like to answer along with those two questions.
I'm I'm not sure who's on on the call. Is Mr. Patel on on the call for Janil 2015 Incorporated Doing Businesses Neighborhood Gas and Grocery at 3102 Napier Avenue? He may not be on the call. What what about? Uh, what about Mr. Bashir for 2311 Exxon 2311 LLC? Mr. Bashir, are you on the call?
Yes, sir. Mr. Bashir is on the call for Exxon 2311 LLC.
Mr. Bashir, have you heard the the I think Commissioner Watkins had a question about your hours of operation?
Yes, I heard it. We know about this one. All the stores on the Pineona Avenue are mostly open 24 hours. But we don't intend to open it up till late night, but we might open it till 11 or 12 or 10. But we don't intend to open it for 24 hours.
So you plan on closing that 10 or opening that 10?
Closing at 10 or 11 P. M. We don't we don't tend to open late hours.
All right, I understand. Thank you. And what type of products are y'all planning on? More of the the same typical or anything different in the variety?
All these we have only three beer companies and we we will try our best to introduce new variety to people over there. Maybe we can try new ones if they have any because of this corner. They are there's already shortage of everything, as you know already. As soon as we can get good ones, we will have it over there.
So mainly beer? So mainly beer and wine?
No, no wine, just beer.
Not beer, beer.
Beer. Do you have gas?
Oh, no, it is beer and wine. I'm sorry. It is beer and wine according to this. I'm sorry.
We do have we do have a gas. Yeah, we do have the gas pump over there. We have four dispensers over there.
All right. And do you have what Lotto and game machines?
Yes, sir. We don't have it yet. We have the ACOA machines over there recently got it, but we are still waiting on the lottery. We had online classes for the lottery today, this morning.
Okay, you have the machine, but they don't have the lottery yet.
Mr. Bashir, limit.
Yes, sir.
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bashir, I I've got I've got one place on here with. This way it says beer and wine. Are you applying for you only paid $600, which is the which is the thief of a beer package sales to go as I understand it?
We apply for the beer license only, I guess.
Yeah, right. Beer beer only, no no wine.
No wine.
Okay. So it's beer beer only, Commissioner Watkins?
Great.
If I if I could add, Commissioner Watkins, we actually had Colonel Carswell go out and meet with the owners at both of these establishments. Colonel Carswell has a full report that we can provide you, but the highlights were that when he spoke with the owner at this establishment, while he was actually there, a maintenance person came up to cut the grass and clean the outside of the establishment and reported that he will be cutting the grass weekly and cleaning up daily. The only negative that Colonel Carswell noted was that there weren't any no laundering signs yet. But there was an assurance from the owner that those would be and would be put on display so that that would not be an issue. But overall, Colonel Carswell did not have any negatives to report about either establishment.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
All right. What what's the what's the what's the pleasure of the commission about the Janil 2015 Beer and Wine Package Sales to Go at 3102 Napier Avenue? And Mr. Bashir, beer package sales to go at 2311 Pineona. Can I get a motion?
Mr. Mayor. I'll second.
Who is my motion? And then I go I go to Commissioner Wen.
May I approach him?
Okay. May I approach him? May I approach him as my motion and Wen was my second, I think. Commissioner Wen?
Yes, I'd like to say something. I I would love to vote no, obviously. Commissioner Watkins makes is trying to make efforts to change what these people do, but they do what they do. We don't have a legal ground to stand on to stop them. Lawsuit. So I'd love to vote no, but I'm going to say we have to vote yes.
Okay, got a motion got a motion and second to to put these other two sentences on the consent agenda for tonight. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no? Well, silence is a is a yes to vote. So I'm gonna say the yes is happy. They'll be on the consent agenda for the for the evening meeting tonight under the consent agenda. Let me see if I can't discuss.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a comment? There's people out there, commissioners. There's commissioners out there on mute. So how can you know if they're voting yes or no when they're on mute during the vote? I just just wanted to point that out. That happened last week.
Right. Well, that's why I say, okay, good. So moving on, we we got a discussion of the millage rate. And I think Julie Moore is going to lead us in a quick discussion of the millage rate. We we have the the new county tax digest back now from the tax assessor's office. Is that right, Julie?
Yes, that's correct. We have the tax assessor's office and tax commissioner's office and finance department to thank for working to finalize the tax digest. And it does show some growth. So the question becomes if we want to choose to maintain our current millage rate of 20.331 mills, then we would realize an additional $2.6 million. But that would require that we advertise it as a tax increase, even though we would be maintaining the same 20.331 because we would not be accepting the rollback. We would advertise, have three public meetings and then vote to maintain that 20.331 mills and realize about 2.6 in addition from that digest. We also would run an ad that would show show an example of a proposed tax increase for a home that has a fair market value of $125,000. The increase would be $14.81 annually. So if we want to maintain the 20.331, we would see an additional 2.6. We would have to advertise as a tax increase. It would require three public hearings. And he needs the tax commissioner needs to have this finalized by mid-August to take it to the state.
Thank you. Have a question.
Wonderful. Growth in our digest.
Have a question.
Yes?
The 20.331, you said that would bring in how much additional funding?
Well, so let me say it again. The 20.331 is the mill rate that we charged this previous year. If we maintain 20.331, we're not accepting the rollback. It brings in an additional 2.6 million.
And what if we do roll it back? What does the people get?
Pennies on the dollar. I mean, it would.
Okay.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, Julie, would you give the breakdown of what that 2.6 comes from? How much of that is new growth on the tax digest?
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Report I am looking at says that 1.1 of that is from new property and 1.4 of that is from new assessment or reassessment.
Commissioners, if you recall, we do the assessment every three years. So this is from last year's assessment, which only affected a third of the community. So again, when we did the budget, we did anticipate that we would be having this discussion down the road. Remember, we're not raising the miller rate, the millage rate. We're keeping the same millage rate. But because of the new growth in the community, this would allow us to to see an additional 2.6. I will remind you that when we had this discussion, we talked about the furlough, which is $2.8 million that we would try to put that back in the budget. We moved the furloughs to the second half of the year. And then we are also anticipating bringing you the pay scale in the month of October. Currently, we're looking at the pay scale amount to get the public safely reevaluated where we want it to be. We're looking at that's probably going to be about $2.9 million when we initially grade all positions where they need to be. Plus, we need to account for longevity. So we are working through those numbers now to bring those reports back to you. But again, I told you I was going to be a broken record and talk to you about the 2.8 million.
So if I understand right, if we do nothing to the millage rate because of growth, new businesses opening, new things being built and property values going up, that generates an extra $2.3 million in revenue.
2.6.
2.6 million dollars in revenue.
Yeah.
All right. So doing that generates 2.6.
Commissioner Allen.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Commissioner Watkins, let me let me say this. You're breaking up pretty bad and hard to understand. But let me restate where we are. And this is a discussion item only. If because of the growth in in the digest, the state the state calculates or the tax assessor's office calculates a mandatory rollback rate so that you technically speaking, this the the reduced millage rate on on the enlarged digest gives you the same amount of money as last year. But if we maintain the millage rate current constant, we don't change the millage rate, then we would we would end up collecting an additional $2.6 million, which I think would be needed as you go forward. Now, where we are with this, I I have decided to be Joe the bad guy. I have I have decided to ask the attorney's office to prepare a resolution to refuse to accept the rollback rate. I'm going to introduce that and bring it next week at the at the committee meetings. So be prepared to discuss it then. And if you want to accept the rollback rate, then you'd have to, you know, vote me down. But if you want to keep it so that millage rate stays constant and collecting an additional $2.6 million because of growth in the digest, then you'd vote to maintain a constant millage rate. So that's all we need to put tonight, just to introduce this to you and let you be thinking about it between now and next Tuesday.
I got a question.
We've already done.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question to you. What would that throw the fund balance? What would that throw the throw the fund balance to be at the end of the year?
I can't possibly begin to estimate that because we got a whole year ahead of you. Don't know what the expenses are going to be. Don't know what other revenues are going to be. So again, a shot in the dark, but if if everything else stayed stayed the same, it would grow the fund balance by 2.6. But you know you're going to have increased expenses. Doc Mav just mentioned two of them.
Exactly.
Right. And 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 the other thing, so you know your expenses are going up. So hopefully you'd be trying to keep a constant fund balance and not dip in.
I don't disagree with what you're saying, Mayor, not at all. I was just trying to get across that we will have money in the fund balance that we can probably go ahead. Or I won't be here, but they can go ahead and put that pay scale in place where it needs to be.
Right.
With additional funding.
There you go. Right.
Okay, that's what I was hoping to say.
Okay, the 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 next the next item we've already voted on. Commissioner Jones, did you want to say something before we move on?
Yes, sir. One question before you move on because you sometimes you move too quickly. On the millage rate, just for informational purposes, what would it what would the rollback rate be if in fact it was rolled back? What would it roll back to? Maybe Julie can tell us.
It would be rolled back to 19.987.
Okay, thank you very much.
Welcome.
Okay. Moving on, we got the item D is about the changing the name to the Arbor Conservation Board from the Tree Board. So that's that basically is a an amendment to that ordinance, is it not, Michael? Did we draft it as an amendment or just a rewrite of the of the ordinance to to change the name every way it appeared?
No, sir, that you had it right the first time. So the the committee passed the ordinance, the code change last week to this adds two new members and changes the name from Tree Commission to Tree Board. And this is an amendment that you asked me to prepare to propose the name Arbor Conservation Board instead of Tree Board. And so all it does is it it goes through the document and replaces all the references to Tree Board with Arbor Conservation Board instead.
That's cuter.
It is cuter. I like Arbor Conservation Board.
That's good.
Okay, well, then can I get a can I get a motion and a second to put that on the by Lucas? And who is my second?
Second, Alan.
Okay, Alan was my second. Further discussion about that? Hearing none, all in favor of of the ordinance renaming it to Arbor Conservation Board signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose say no? Okay, that'll be on on the agenda for tonight. Got two more right quick. The the first is Commissioner Watkins, Small Footprint Stores. Michael, you you made a couple of changes to that and so this is a substitute, I guess. Would you talk about the changes that you made?
Yes, Mayor. So Commissioner Mayor, recall, last week we were talking about the security camera provisions that that are already in the code. Anybody that sells alcohol by the package to go has to have security cameras that watch the entrance and the checkout counters at the stores. And that's an existing requirement. And we had talked about how the version last week added a requirement where when someone goes to get their license, we actually send a deputy out to verify the security camera system. Sheriff made a comment during the meeting about checking these businesses every year when they renew. And so I had prepared a draft that added that requirement to make it an annual check instead of just once at the the front end. Then, I think on Thursday, I received a phone call from Jim Thomas with Planning and Zoning and Pope Langstaff. And during the the call, Pope mentioned to me that that he and his wife are vegan and that the definition in this this store or in this bill requires the sale of various staple foods, including milk, eggs and meat. And so he said, well, if somebody wants to open a vegan specialty store and they want to sell beer or wine, this would subject them to this this 2,500 distant foot distance rule and and maybe not in the spirit of what Commissioner Watkins was looking at. And so I coordinated with Commissioner Watkins. I drafted a provision regarding specialty stores and added a definition for specialty stores into into this document, which I I can read right now. But basically, a retail store that derives at least 50% of its annual gross sales from certain specialized classes or types of food or beverage products or related accessories or non-food items typically of superior quality or more limited market availability than those general products commonly found in grocery stores. And that includes imported or luxury goods, food or beverages associated with particular culture or global region, food or beverages associated with dietary requirements of a particular religious belief, restaurants and prepared foods, organic, vegan or natural foods, butcher shops, fish markets, cheese shops. And that's there. There's about there's about six or seven others that are it's all on page four of the the document that's attached to board docs. I can go through it all if you like, but I I think that conveys the idea. And so these are, you know, typically they're smaller locations and they focus on just doing one thing really well. And so I wanted to make sure that that just didn't get accidentally caught in the net of. of, um, what Commissioner Watkins was trying to do. And so this adds, um, that provision in. And it, um, also the last week, the draft last week was said to take effect immediately. But, but in thinking about it, um, um, we're going to have to do some new forms for the applications. And so, uh, with Commissioner Watkins' blessing, I changed the effective date to September 1st on this, uh, proposed amendment.
Did you come up with a new name for vice?
There, there wasn't one suggested to me, ma'am, but if you have one, we can put it in there.
No, I thought somebody else might have thought one. I couldn't find one either.
Well, I, I, I had, I had one, uh, uh, and that was, uh, A L B A C C O, uh, L O T. Albacalot.
What is that?
Oh, my God.
Oh, alcohol, tobacco. Okay.
Oh, my goodness. That's too hard.
Well, we can, we can, we can make a modification to that later. I, I didn't, I don't expect that to fly, but anyhow, the, uh, Vice Mark, you know, but we, we may, we may change it between nine and the effective date. So y'all be thinking about, do, do I have a, a, a motion in second? Commissioner Watkins, this, these, these are friendly amendments to your, your legislation. Will you be my mo, motion to approve this? Okay. Can I get a second?
Thank you for the work, Mike.
Second.
Okay. So second by selection to further conversation. He, hearing none, all, all in favor of the ordinance, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All right. The ayes have it, uh, that ordinance will be able to substitute on the agenda for tonight. Uh, fin, finally, uh, is the Board of Education, uh, we, we, this is, this is new, but we mentioned it before. The Board of Education is, uh, contemplating, uh, issuing bonds, uh, to, to get some upfront money on the, on the East Floss so that they can start a little earlier. They've passed the East Floss, it's already been passed, but this is the same thing they do. But they have to get our agreement that in the event that the East Floss funding is not enough to pay the bonds and they have to go up on their millage rate, the Board of Education millage rate, even though they have the authority to set it with the only ones that have the authority to levy it. And so we're saying that we'll agree to levy that increase if they have to have it. But this is a very small amount of bonds based on the total amount of, of, uh, revenue projected that they're going to get. So this is almost a mere formality for us, but nevertheless, we have to do it. How close did I get?
Dead on target. Uh, the, uh, the total amount is, I think, a hundred and, Michael, the East Floss? Hundred and eighty?
A hundred and eighty-five million is the whole.
Yeah. And so they're only issuing 15.5 million in bonds. So, and this will be only affect the board. So this is, this is something we have to do under the law.
Yeah. I made a motion.
I second.
Uh, Commissioner Allen, were you, were you motioning?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Win second.
Move, move, do pass on that?
Yes, sir.
And win, win second. So, all right. So Al, Allen is, uh, motioning second by win. Further conversation?
What are we doing?
We, we, we are, we are agreeing to levy the additional millage if it's needed by the Board of Education because of a shortage in the E, E lost, uh, East Floss receipts to pay the bonds that we agreed to let them raise their millage rate and le, levy their increase.
Something we've always done.
True. So they thought the East Floss was going to generate more than 28 million?
I'm sorry. Say again, Commissioner Watkins.
They thought the East Floss was going to generate more than 28 million dollars a year?
Yeah. The, the bonds are 15.5 million. The East Floss should generate substantially more than that. But according to the constitution, you got to provide for this to get the bond. So it's just a legal requirement. It doesn't affect our credit at all.
Right.
Um, I got you.
Okay. Got a motion in second. Is there further discussion? Hearing, hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, uh, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no? Okay. The ayes have it and that'll be on the agenda for tonight. Uh, uh, we didn't have time, uh, to review the agenda, so we're going to fly blind, uh, into the meeting tonight. But we need to go ahead and start it because it's already 10 minutes after six. Uh, is there, uh, any objection to adjourning this meeting and convening the regular meeting? Hearing no objection, with the pre-commission meeting is adjourned. Uh, and in the same breath, let me, uh, convene and call to order the regular meeting of the Macon Bibb County Commission. Mr. Attorney, do I need to reread the, the, the notice about, uh, close to the public and all by zoom? No? Okay. Good. Uh, then, then we'll go, uh, to the, to the, uh, regular meeting, regular meeting agenda. Um, and the call to order we have accomplished, uh, I have asked, uh, Commissioner Bibbins, uh, if he would be willing to give us an invocation and he has very graciously agreed to do that. Uh, Commissioner Bibbins, may I call on you at this point, please, sir, to give us an invocation?
Yes, sir. May we bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for your grace, your gift of grace. And we look forward to showing you through our words and actions that we appreciate your grace as an opportunity to grow in our wisdom, love and compassion. And that that wisdom, love and compassion will cause us to live up to the last five words of the Pledge of Allegiance, liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Amen. Oh, that was nice.
Thank you.
Amen. Thank you very much, Commissioner Bibbins. I appreciate that. Uh, well said, sir. Uh, next item of, uh, of business is the approval of the minutes, uh, from the public hearing that we held on, uh, July the 7th, as well as the pre-commission, uh, meeting, uh, and the regular meeting held on July 7th. The, the, the public, uh, hearing was on the war road that we did. And I, I think there was only one comment on that, uh, and then the regular, uh, pre, pre-commission meeting and the regular. Any changes, uh, additions or corrections in any of those three sets of minutes that were prepared and distributed? If not, can I get a motion approved? Tell me who that was.
Slessinger.
Slessinger.
Slessinger, Slessinger and, and, uh, and Lucas. Second. Okay. Thank you. Further discussion, hearing none, all in favor of the approval of those three sets of minutes, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Come on y'all. Somebody says aye. Okay. Opposed, say no.
Aye.
The ayes have it and the minutes are approved. Those three sets of minutes are approved. Okay. That's excellent. Next item on our agenda are reports from, uh, standing committees. And, uh, first committee, uh, is Operations and Finance and, and that report will be given to us by Chairman Watkins.
All right. The Operations and Finance Committee met on July 14th, 2020 and took the following action. The following items were approved. An agreement with the Department of Corrections in the amount of 345,226 dollars for the purpose of hiring offender work detail labor from McEver Prison Detention Center. Um, agreement with Lanier Plans doing businesses core cat in the amount of 60,424 dollars and 30 cent for the delivery and installation of new playground equipment at Carolyn Creighton Park. An agreement with Dunwoody Bealan Architects in the amount of 96,000 for architectural and engineering services for phase two of late Tobosaki renovation project. The purchase of hardware to increase the speed of the New World ERP system. Um, in the amount of 45,000 from Ag Tag USA. An agreement with Williams Communications in the amount of 53,195 dollars and 55 cent for the purchase of batteries and power supply adapters. Past committee for the second time. The committee approved the following supplemental appropriation, 61,000 dollars payable for fund balance for the purpose of funding a roof repair at the Washington Memorial Library. The committee accepted the following grants. The acceptance of a council, Council of Accountability Court Judges State of Georgia Grant Award from the Georgia Criminal Justice Coordinating Council for fiscal year 2021 in the amount of 125,219 dollars with matching funds in the amount of 13,913 dollars payable from existing employee salaries that was awarded to the Macon Judicial Circuit Adult Felony Drive Court Program. The Macon Judicial Circuit Mental Health Court Program received a 249, 249,000 dollar grant with matching funds in the amount of 27,717 dollars. Uh, the Macon Judicial Circuit Veterans Court received a grant in the amount of 195,882 dollars uh, with a in-kind match of 21,765 dollars. And the Macon Judicial Circuit Juvenile Court received a grant in the amount of 383,615, um, with no local match, excuse me. And, uh, and this concludes the Operations and Finance Committee report. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Watkins. Uh, and next is the Economic and Community Development. Luke, Chairman Lucas?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, the Economic and Community Development Committee report. Uh, the members of the committee are Lucas, Lessinger, Bibbins, Shepherd and Watkins. The committee met on July 14th, 2020 and took the following action. The committee approved the following appointment. Chief, uh, Fire Chief Marvin Riggins was reappointed to the Region Five Emergency Medical Services Council. The committee approved the ordinance to substitute the board for commission in the name of the Trink Commission and to amend the composition of the board. And I understand there is, uh, an amended, uh, there's an amendment to that, uh, that will be handled during the regular, uh, meeting. The committee also approves naming the Wise Avenue Park as the Dr. Betty Talbert Park and the Triangle Park as the Reverend Jake Park of Memorial Park. The committee adopted the Economic and Community Development Department's budget for fiscal year for ESC, uh, ESG home and CDC funds. This concludes the report of the Economic and Community Development Committee.
Uh, uh, thank you, Chairman Lucas. Uh, uh, next is Public Safety Committee and that report will be given to us by Chairman Win. Chairman Win?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, uh, Public Safety Committee met on July the 14th, 2020 and the following, um, was approved. An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to amend certain sections of Chapter Four of the Macon Bibb County Code of Ordinances for the purpose of categorizing and regulating certain classes of small footprint retail stores to require the sheriff's approval of security camera systems for certain establishments and for other lawful purposes. Wasn't it, I, I think there may be amendment to this, but we'll, we'll discuss that later. But with no further business, the meeting was adjourned.
Uh, excellent. Uh, uh, thank you, Chairman Win. And finally, the Facilities and Engineering Committee, Chairman Jones, will you give us that report, please, sir?
Yes, sir. We met as well on July the 14th and we approved a resolution for the installation of streetlights on Fleming Drive. There'll be five streetlights there. Installations paid for by the citizens, but the actual cost of electricity will be paid out of the facilities management budget. And we also approved allowing the county manager to move forward on receiving appraisals for dirt and a potential site for the transfer station. That completes the report of Facilities and Engineering.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Jones. I appreciate that report. Uh, uh, next item, uh, are public comments, uh, on agenda, uh, items. Um, and, uh, I'll turn this over to Michael McNeil, uh, and Janice Ross together to talk to us about the number of, 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 uh, um, comments that have been received by email and submitted to the clerk's office. Um, Michael, are you going to give that report?
Uh, yes, Mayor. Yes, Mayor.
Uh, then, then let me call on you at this point.
Okay. And we, we have a couple of, um, non-agenda, um, comments for the end of the meeting as well. Uh, but for, um, agenda items, the only item, the only comment topic that we received was regarding the, um, proposal for, uh, Cotton Avenue and the roundabout at First and Poplar and Rosa Park Square and the relocation of the, um, uh, monuments and, and Cotton Avenue and, um, Poplar Street Park. And so, um, we received, uh, 39 comments in favor of, uh, the proposal to do those improvements and move the statues. And we received, uh, seven comments in opposition. And so, um, uh, in, in speaking to the mayor about, you know, we, we had some, uh, concerns that were raised about the, um, comment process last time. And so, uh, I, I don't know, Mayor, if you want to go over that or?
Right. Thank you, Michael. The, uh, rules of, of procedure that we have for commission meetings, uh, contain this language when it's, uh, dealing with, uh, uh, public comments on agenda items. Uh, reading the pertinent part at the discretion of the presiding officer, a maximum of three people uh, may be allowed to provide public comment in favor of an item and a maximum of three people may be allowed to provide public comment opposing an item. Uh, these limits may be waived by the affirmative vote of at least five members of the commission. Uh, so you just heard Michael say that we've received a total of approximately 45, approximately 45, uh, comments. And rather than reading, uh, in, in their entirety of all 45, uh, I've asked him to select, uh, summarize, uh, and then to select, uh, uh, three, uh, to read for the proposal and three, uh, against the proposal. Um, it's, it's because I think all of us are familiar with generally the background and the feelings of, of both sides, uh, here. Uh, so that's my decision to, to let Michael know. One last thing. I have asked the clerk to forward to every commissioner, every email that was received. Every single one should have been forwarded to you, should be in your email box and, and would encourage you to review them and read them and see who sent them in, this, that or the other. Some of them are, are short enough to be read. Others of them are more like an epistle that would take probably eight, 10, 12 minutes to read. They're that long. Uh, so each of, each of the, every comment has been, has been sent to all of the commissioners. Uh, but I've asked Michael to, to summarize and select three that he felt like were kind of reflective of the, of the total batch, you know?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, before he starts, do we get the comments sent to us from the last meeting? All of the comments like you're doing tonight?
Yes, yes, yes. All, all of them from the la, last meeting and from this meeting. And will be, either have been or will be forwarded to you. Yeah. Janice is waiting, nodding her head saying yes. So we, we'll get them all to you, to every commissioner. Uh, Michael, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. And, um, the way that I've, I've structured these, um, in the past when we've had this, this kind of situation arise, I've, I've got, um, one opposed, one for, and they, they alternate. So, um, the first comment is a letter that was, um, sent by the Sons of Confederate Veterans. And it says, um, uh, "One of the great controversies of our time is a memorialization of the late Southern Confederacy. It is astonishing that the accusations of police lawbreaking in places like Minnesota have resulted in demands that local officials break the law in Georgia in response. I refer, of course, to the Official Code of Georgia annotated, uh, 531, copy attached. According to our information, the Macon Bibb County Government is considering the removal of our beautiful monument to the Confederate dead located at Cotton Avenue and Second Street. As I am certain you know, this is one of the earliest monuments raised to the Confederate dead being dedicated in 1879. For all too many families, the dead would never return from the battlefield, often being buried in mass graves, buried in unmarked graves where they fell or in a grave marked unknown. These monuments were the only markers many grieving families had for their sons, husbands and brothers. Contrary to the meme of the social justice warriors that the Macon monument expresses is sorrow over these deeply felt losses. Our information is that the Macon Bibb County Government is proposing to remove the statue for reinstallation at a later date at Whittle Park at Rose Hill Cemetery, also to be renovated at a future date. Thus, the current proposal means that the statue will be moved twice. Across the state, the local camps and the Georgia Division of the Sons of Confederate Veterans have filed suit to stop the removal of statues from being have filed suit to stop the removal of statues from being done in violation of OCGA fifty-three-one. The local camp of the SCV is the General Edward Door Tracy Junior Camp Number Eighteen. We have considered the proposal as we understand it and hope to clarify in our meeting with you. Rather than be confrontational, we would like to be cooperative and work with Macon Bibb County Government to mutually satisfactory solution. Here are our concerns. Number one, the statue is one of the oldest in the South, and moving it twice doubles the risk of damage. In addition, the expense involved is approximately doubled. Is this the best use of taxpayers' dollars? Number two, if removed and stored out of sight and out of mind for years, will the project ever be completed? Removing it to storage is a violation of OCGA fifty-dash-three-dash-one, which states, number three, no publicly owned monument erected, constructed, created, or maintained on the public property of this state or its agencies, departments, authorities, or instrumentalities or on real property owned by an agency of the state of Georgia shall be relocated, removed, concealed, obscured, or altered in any fashion by any officer or agency, provided, however, that appropriate measures for the preservation, protection, and interpretation of such monument or memorial shall not be prohibited. Is it appropriate to conceal and storage a monument for years? Why not maintain the monument in its present location and then remove it to the prepared location? This halves the number of moves required, saving money and reducing the danger of damage to the monument. Any expense incurred to monitor and protect the monument in its present location would be more than made by additional and unnecessary move in storage. Might we suggest that cameras, lights, and vigilant police patrols will minimize any such danger? If the social justice warriors know that the monument is scheduled for removal, their zeal should diminish. Once moved, the electronic surveillance equipment could be moved to the new location as well. As we know that you are leaving office shortly, I regret to say that mere verbal assurances are inadequate to assuage our fears that your successors will be as honorable as you and hold to your promises. Thus, the General Edward Door Tracy Junior Camp Number Eighteen of the Sons of Confederate Veterans and the Georgia Division of the Sons of Confederate Vision, Veterans, Georgia Division Commander Timothy F. Pilgrim, want to make the following proposal. A, that the Sons of Confederate Veterans, both local and state, would agree not to propose the removal of the monument from Cotton Avenue and Second Street to the new proposed park. B, that Macon Bibb County will maintain and protect the monument in its present location until the new site is prepared and ready to receive the monument. C, that the SCV and Macon Bibb County Commission will work together to ensure proper preservation, protection, and preservation of the monument. No decision concerning the monument will be made without full knowledge and input from the SCV. D, that the Macon Bibb County Commission will not use city-county employees to move the monument or prepare the new site for the monument. A professional company such as Clark Memorial will be hired to lower the monument, move the monument, prepare the new site, and reinstall the monument at the new location. E, at the new site, the monument will have proper lighting, proper video surveillance, proper fencing if needed, and guaranteed police surveillance. D, the monument to the Confederate women was intended to be a gift of the Confederate veterans to the women of the Confederacy. It is our understanding that this monument is property of the United Daughters of the Confederacy, UDC. The SCV and UDC are partner organizations with the same purpose, and that is to see that the history of the Confederacy is preserved and presented properly and honestly. As partners in our history, the Macon Bibb Commission should consider both organizations before any decisions are made either concerning either or both monuments. To repeat, the Sons of Confederate Veterans believe that cooperation and compromise in this matter is to the benefit of all. We think we have offered grounds that all parties can accept and live with. We would propose that this agreement be reduced to writing and ratified by both parties in the form of a contract signed by the respective representatives. Please let us know your thoughts on this important matter. Signed Thomas Stevens, Commander of Camp Eighteen, SCV, and Johnny McNichols, Adjutant of Camp Eighteen." Um, okay. The second, uh, second comment was from uh, Ms. Erin Keller. And it reads as follows. Um, "This is an uncomfortable time for everyone, but when necessary change arises, that uncomfortable feeling is par for the course. Please understand, this is something that is just as important as addressing COVID nineteen because both matters are saturated in racial injustices and disparities. The statues resemble different things for different people, but ultimately I'm asking you to be open and consider which vote sends the community-wide message that Macon Bibb is welcoming, inviting place for all. Though it is painful and deeply seated, those statues do not, uh, those statues do represent history, but a history that is rooted in hate, discrimination, segregation, and inequality. The present cannot change history, but we can learn from it and do better to create a better future for the next generation. That said, we are at a juxtaposition of, quote, moving forward together, end quote, or remaining stagnant where only some of our community is empowered, valued, and affirmed. The relocating of the statues is a physical demonstration of this county's commitment to doing better and learning from the past. Not all history is meant to be celebrated in a way that perpetuates the oppression of marginalized groups. I hope that the Macon Bibb County Commission elects to do the hard, uncomfortable thing to relocate these statues to a more appropriate place that allows for downtown to truly be an inclusive place for all NBC residents. When I walk into my house now, I know that I am accepted, loved, and that I belong, because I see pictures of myself, symbols that treasure, trigger treasured memories to recall a good welcoming feeling. Well, well, you see, for the black community, these statues are the, quote, pictures and symbols, end quote, that remind us that our ancestors were beaten, battered, bruised, lynched, chastised, and ultimately were brainwashed, that we're half a person, that their life was dispensable. Also, a constant reminder that we have so much work to do regarding our country's existing unjust oppressive policies and that locations of these statues are in places of prominence and power that send a message that this part of history still has influence in how we do things today. Commissioners, is that true? Are we still a city that celebrates blacks being lesser than whites, that their voices don't matter, that their history from slavery and segregation perspective doesn't matter? Essentially, a vote against the relocating of the statues articulates to our county's majority black population that they uh, don't matter and don't belong downtown. I understand fear and the thought of changing your opinion is hard, but as a government leader, that is my expectation of you. Please vote yes to relocate the statues and preserve history in a more covert manner, so the single act sends the message that we are ready to be better and intentionally create a community that stands firm on an equitable and just community for all of Macon Bibb." Okay, um. The third comment is from uh, John C. Edwards. It says, "Dear Commissioners, this email is intended to be a supplement to two emails I sent to the Commission in response to the resolution, which was initially adopted at the virtual meeting held through Zoom on Tuesday, July fourteenth. First of all, I was misquoted in an article published Friday by Channel Thirteen WMAZ News, which reported I, quote, threaten to lead a lawsuit, end quote, if the resolution is carried forward. I said I would lead the, quote, charge, end quote, on a lawsuit being filed. I've been retired from the active practice of law for several years, and although I still have a law license, it is inactive, which means I can't file any pleading in court as an attorney unless I reactivate my license, which I don't plan to do. I have been told a lawsuit will be filed on behalf of others, and I intend to fully support it publicly. I expect the suit will seek a restraining order, followed by a motion for preliminary injunction to prevent the resolution from being carried forward. Let me say I have read Georgia Code annotated Section Fifty-dash-three-dash-one at sequencha, and as my opinion, this resolution violates the Georgia law. In fact, the reasons given for relocating the statue are disingenuous, to put it mildly. The relocation of the statue doesn't meet the need for the construction of roads and streets for public traffic under fifty-dash-three-dash-one B seven. The statue was built with private donations and has existed as a present location for years. It is the clear intent of Georgia law. Appropriate measures should be taken for the preservation and protection of these types of statues and monuments. The above statute also prohibits the relocation of any monument to a cemetery. The proposed relocation site is in the Whittle Park Triangle, which is directly in front of the entrance to Rose Hill Cemetery, and for all practical purposes is a part of the cemetery. To my knowledge, the soldier statue has not been defaced during its existence until the protests within the last several weeks. We all know the vandalism that occurs frequently at Rose Hill Cemetery, and in my opinion, if the statue is relocated to the proposed new location, it will be vandalized and defaced, if not seriously damaged or completely destroyed, on a regular basis. I don't know if you have seen, the House Republican Leader Kevin McCarthy on Friday introduced a bill in Congress yesterday that would prevent state and local governments that do not protect monuments from receiving federal grants. I don't like to make unsupported accusations, but I must say it appears very suspicious the Commission would take this initiative during the COVID nineteen pandemic, when it is impossible to hold a public hearing except by virtual meeting through Zoom, especially when the video of the meeting didn't work properly and was interrupted many times. I expect there were many citizens who didn't have access to this virtual meeting or became frustrated with trying to watch and just tuned it out. I also question why all three phases of the proposed work around City Hall, including Rosa Parks Square at a cost of one point five million dollars, were combined with this proposed replacement of a statue of a soldier with a plaza at the end of Cotton Avenue at a cost of five hundred thousand dollars. With all due respect, this appears to be nothing more than a ruse to justify removing the monument. As far as I know, the statue doesn't represent any one person. Many soldiers who fought in the war were conscripts, and most didn't own slaves. The statue honors those Georgia soldiers who gave their lives for what they considered doing their service. It was an effort by the Southern States to block the Union government from destroying states' rights. Aside from this legal issue, I can't understand why an expenditure of five hundred thousand dollars to relocate this statue and establish a plaza is necessary when our city and county have many other priorities that need to be addressed. We already have too many parks that have to be maintained, and there's no specific need for a, quote, plaza, end quote, at this location. In fact, spending a million and a half dollars to put a traffic circle in Rosa Parks Square, which was just recently constructed, is a total waste of taxpayer money. The county is in need of a hundred and forty different sheriff's deputies, as well as more first responders to protect our citizens. The above referred to expected lawsuit will require expenditure of taxpayer dollars to defend. But before going to law school, I majored in history, where I studied, among other things, the Civil War. One maxim I learned, his history frequently repeats itself. We need to learn from history and not ignore or destroy it. Otherwise, the horrors of past errors may recur again. Unfortunately, our students today are not taught not only about the Civil War, but all other wars in which our country has since been involved. Removing and relocating monuments and statues like those which are the subject of this resolution will only give rise to more divisiveness and racism at a time in which we need more unity and understanding in our community and nation. For all the above stated reasons, I urge Mayor and Commissioners to reconsider the resolution and postpone funding and implementing it until there can be more discussion through a public forum after the danger of the spread of COVID nineteen through public gatherings has been eliminated. And also wait to see what laws are enacted by Congress regarding the protection of public monuments. Sincerely, John C. Edwards." The next comment was submitted by um, Nancy Cleveland, who's the Chair of the Friends of Rosa Parks Square Commission, or Board. Um, she writes, "On May eighth, nineteen sixty-seven, Martin Luther King Junior granted an interview to veteran NBC News correspondent, Sander Vanneker, and he said in regards to his famous 'I have a dream' speech, quote, 'I must confess that that dream that I had that day has in many points turned into a nightmare. Now, I'm not one to lose hope. I keep on going. I still have faith in the future, but I've had to analyze many things over the last few years, and I would say over the last few months. I think the biggest problem now is we got our gains over the last twelve years at bargain rates, so to speak. It didn't cost the nation anything. In fact, it helped the economic side of the nation to integrate lunch counters and public accommodations. It didn't cost the nation anything to get the right to vote established. Now, we're confronting issues that cannot be solved without costing the nation billions of dollars. Now, I think this is where we're getting our greatest resistance. They may put it on many other things, but we can't get rid of slums and poverty without it costing the nation something," end quote. I now fully understand why he would have felt this, why after all he fought to accomplish. It costs something to do the right thing. It will cost Macon Bibb County something to decide to move the Confederate statues and carry out the MAP action plans to create a place that will give all Maconites a sense of belonging. The resistance to and lack of comprehension of the historical and symbolic significance of removing the Confederate statues in this day and age feels like a part of the nightmare MLK spoke about. Having to fight to justify the urgency and necessity of following through with the plan to create an area in downtown Macon where everyone feels like they belong in twenty twenty, over thirty years after MLK's assassination, is frustrating, exhausting, and painful. Moving the statues will help put Macon on the right side of history. It will also give us the opportunity to move forward together, quote, "not only in words, but also in action." Um, the next comment is from uh, Mr. John Adams. And he writes, "Uh, during this difficult time for Macon Bibb, COVID has taken a big toll on all the residents, with so many people that have been laid off from their jobs, furloughed, and not knowing if they ever will be called back to work. It is really concerning that Mr. Watkins thinks moving the statues to build a new park and erect new statues is going to fix anything. Some residents have already received notice that their property value has increased by more than thirty percent, and here we have a five-to-three vote that moving the statues and making a new park is the right thing to do. COVID has brought many families and small businesses to their knees, and they're supposed to just suck it up and take it. All we hear from Ms. Lucas is we are in a pandemic and we need to shut everything back down and make face masks mandatory, but yet she and other commissioners also voted to move forward with Mr. Watkins' agenda without any argument about how they can help citizens. With tax revenue down twenty-two percent for the month of June, and if the pattern holds, revenue for July will be down even more. Now is not the time to be finding a way to get five million dollars for Mr. Watkins' resolution, as he is taking this as an opportune time to push an agenda that don't fix anything, but to waste money, and as the Chairman of Operation and Finance, you would think he would know that. How about we look to spend the money on hiring an experienced IT person, raises for our first responders, PPE for our teachers, and finding a way to give a little back to the property owners? We all need a break and a little help during this difficult time, and moving the statues, erecting new ones, and building a park is a waste of taxpayer money when they can find a better way to use these funds to help all citizens." And the final comment um, is from Alex Morrison with the UDA. So this says, um, "Five years ago, we toured the Make an Action Plan around the community, and we got over two thousand five hundred unique impressions on the bold changes we would make to our community. Every time we would discuss Cotton Avenue Plaza as a potential improvement to this odd intersection, the first thing we would say is that this plan creates a better green space to support the residents and businesses in the area. Next, we would say that the improved traffic pattern would slow vehicles that zoom through this area, making a safer environment for pedestrians, cyclists, and drivers. Slowing traffic through an area improves overall safety and business receipts, you know? Then finally, we would talk about the history of the space and the statue and the vision that it symbolizes in our community. We argued that a dignified and inclusive plaza at this location, the home to cotton warehouses profiting from slave labor, the location of one of Macon's slave markets, and Macon's once vibrant black business district would make a clear statement that this community values all of its citizens and would provide for a true opportunity for healing. Thus, the original conceptual plans changed to include the removal of the statue. Now, this community has its first chance to bring this plan to life with a vote on Tuesday. Those against the plan argue that nothing relative, argue nothing relative to the points above, but only about the statue that would be relocated as a consequence of executing those, these plans. It's an argument that claims that the history, the statue, is honorable and should not be diminished. To compromise, the resolution calls for all Confederate monuments in Macon to be relocated and contextualized together in a new location. They are correct that the history told by these statues is important, but what is more important is that um, we have public spaces that do not diminish more than half the citizens of this city and that make a promise to build a better community that dismantles the systems of white supremacy, of which these monuments are a physical symbol of. And if you argue that your taxes shouldn't go to this, remember that black citizens' tax dollars have been paying to maintain these symbols for more than a century. We must build a better community from this ground up." Uh, Mister Mayor, I believe that concludes all the public comments that I have on agenda items.
Uh, it, it's very good, Michael. Thank you uh, very much. Uh, we'll move on, we'll move on now uh, to the consent agenda. Uh, and for the benefit of those uh, listening, um, every uh, I, every application um, for an alcohol license uh, has to be accompanied uh, by a certification by the sheriff of a satisfactory background check, a certification uh, by Business Development Services that the appropriate alcohol beverage license fees have been paid uh, have been paid for the types of alcohol sought to be dispensed, a certificate from the Planning and Zoning Commission that the, the location is appropriately zoned for that use, a distance measurement form from the county attorney, excuse me, I'm sorry, from the county engineer to certify that the location meets all of the distance requirement, always otherwise says distance requirements are satisfied. So each of these applications has all of that requisite documentation. The first application is by Kajal Patel. The business name is Yogi Mahant 2020 LLC, doing business at Fort Hawkins Package Store at 890 Emery Highway. And that application is for liquor, beer, and wine package sales to go from that location. The second application, the applicant is Natal Amboal Patel. The business name is Janil 2015 Incorporated, doing business at Neighborhood Gas and Grocery at 3102 Napier Avenue. And that is for beer and wine package sales to go from that location. The third and final application is by Hazanon Bashir. The, the business name is Exxon 2311 LLC, doing business at Exxon Food Mart at 2311 Pineona Avenue, and that is for beer sales to go from that location. The committee of the whole recommends approval and issuance of those three licenses as requested. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of issuing those three licenses, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, say no. The ayes have it and those.
I said no.
Okay, got one no, Commissioner Watkins. I'm sorry, Commissioner Watkins, didn't he want one no, but the ayes have it. Those license applications will, will be issued as requested. That takes us now then to the next item on our agenda, which is old business. And the first item of old business is a professional services agreement for Corningate, Corningate Engineering to look at the old coaling tower for a fee not to exceed $1,000, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
The resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute a professional services agreement with Corningate Engineering Incorporated in the amount of $1,000 for the purpose of providing a structural inspection report regarding the structural integrity of the Transco Coal Tower to be paid from the mayor's contingency fund and for other lawful purposes.
The committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is a committee amendment, and it is for the downtown development plan, master plan, consisting of three components, each with its own financial trigger, and the relocation of monuments as necessary, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to proceed with the Macon Action Plan proposal, calling for the creation of a plaza on Cotton Avenue at Second Street, and to provide for the relocation of the monument, their own, to Whittle Park and for other lawful purposes.
Actually, that's not the substitute that has all three, three parts. Can you see if you can find this? The, the substitute that we, that we actually voted on, because Commissioner Watkins was kind enough to, to let me, let us vote on the substitute first.
That's the one I, that's the one they sent down, Mr. Mayor.
Michael, do you, do you have the caption of the substitute that you could read for us?
Mr. Mayor, I don't believe I changed the caption. I just changed the substance to reflect the, it, it does reflect the three parts.
The caption didn't change, but, but the substance did. Michael, how about then reviewing with us just so that we'll reflect and recall the, the three, the three component pieces, please, sir.
Yes, sir. So this authorize and request the mayor to take the following actions. One, prepare documentation for the backing of up to $20 million in urban development authority bonds for the completion of the Marriott Hotel project and the former Willie Hill Annex Building, which shall not be executed without further commission approval of all final terms and conditions. Two, solicit and accept grant funding or donations from any lawful source as needed to reach the aggregate goal of $5 million. Three, upon identifying county funds or otherwise raising a total sum exceeding $500,000, the mayor shall be authorized to proceed with moving the Cotton Avenue Monument to Whittle Park in order to preserve and protect said monument, provided that if additional time is needed to prepare a permanent site at Whittle Park, then the monument shall instead be moved first into a temporary storage space for preservation and protection and to implement the Macon Action Plan project relating to the creation of a Cotton Avenue Plaza as illustrated in Exhibit A, using such available funding with any contract subject to further commission approval. And then three, or the next item, number four, reads the same thing. It's, once you raise a million and a half dollars, move the Women in the South Monument to Whittle Park and implement the Poplar and First Street Roundabout Project. That's an Exhibit B. And then number five is, once an additional $3 million is raised for a total of $5 million, then proceed with the implementation of Rosa Parks Square improvements as illustrated in Exhibit C.
The committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Got Commissioner Bivens first, then Commissioner Wynn.
I'm, I'm going to vote in support of this, but I'm concerned that that pattern of forgetting or leaving out things that are of particular concern to minorities is going to continue, like the funding for Rosa Parks Square.
All right, Commissioner Wynn?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Have a few comments to make here. First of all, I, I've already made comments about why this is so misaligned with the needs of this community. Some of the letters that were read, comments, public comments that were read kind of stated what I said. There's more things in this community that we need to worry about that this entire community is, is, is in need of. We have crime that's at a rate that's unbelievable now. I think I heard we had another death from last night or today. So we're up to 32 or 33 people. The people of Macon have spoken to us at on-the-table meetings twice, and their number one concern was the crime here. So what do we worry about? We worry about moving two statues. We have poverty in our community. We have block, but what worry about? We worry about moving two statues. We have the lack of police officers. If you want to spend $5 million, and I know it's coming from various sources, but if you want to spend any money at all from our general fund, it needs to go towards police officers so that we can fight the crime, the number one problem in our community. Right now, we're faced with COVID. And I tell you, the first, the first letter that was written was from someone that was this part of the Sons of the Confederate Soldiers or something like that. I'm sorry, I don't have the name correctly. But that person gave a good, good argument of why we just want to talk about this later to get together. I think there's a compromise out there for moving these statues, but you haven't let us talk about it. You haven't let the public be involved, except for three letters today and last time you gave no letters. So you're just, Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm faulting you for that again. But here's what I had a concern about. We talk about this being part, this, this, the Cotton Avenue Plaza being part of the Macon Action Plan. And you know, it's been in, since 2014, we've had the Macon Economic Development Commission involved. We've had the Macon Industrial Authority involved. We've had the Community Foundation involved. We've had a lot of people, a lot of meetings, a lot of public forums out there with hundreds of people involved. And here we come back with a little proposal, a proposal by you, Mayor, that you want to add a roundabout. I don't think that was in the proposal for the Macon Action Plan. You want to spend 1.5 million dollars. The only reason you're doing that, and I'm pointing my finger at you, is because you want to move that statue, and you're backing into it by saying we have to have a road project. We do not need a roundabout at the top of Poplar at first. And I think that that's stupid to even recommend that. We need to use that money for other appropriate things. Secondly, and I want to pull up, I want to ask, where are you? I want to ask Rachel to pull up a picture, please. That's the picture. That's the picture of the original proposal that's on page 54 of the Macon Action Plan. Someone photoshopped it, or someone changed it to remove the statue. I want to know who did that to show the other picture that Virgil, the Commissioner Watkins was showing. This is the way it looks in our action plan. The removal of the statue was not part of that plan. And I think that you're committing things that, that are inappropriate. And if you look at this, it's not road projects. All you do is close off a little section of Cotton Avenue, and you, you expand the park. That's what they're talking about. You can't say that's a road project, and you can't justify a roundabout to move these monuments. That's doing it backwards. You're trying to back into it. This thing needs to be discussed by the public. I am mad about it. I'm mad about the way this is going about. This is happening because that photo is the original photo. You look in the plan on page 54, if you will. And I want to ask Commissioner Watkins, did you photo shoot that to take that out of there? No, no, it's my turn to talk. You can talk when your hands, your hand goes up and the mayor calls. It's my turn to finish talking, Commissioner Watkins. And I can say this because that statue is there in this picture.
Well, well, hold on, hold on, Commissioner Wynn. Under the rules of decorum, you, you, you're supposed to address your comments to the chair.
All right, Mr. Mayor, then I'm saying that.
You're supposed to address your comments and, and not attack fellow commissioners, so.
I'm not attacking him. I'm saying what happened to this picture. I want to know what happened to it. Okay? Did you do it, Mr. Mayor? I, I just want to know. But here's the deal. That, those statues, we may compromise on how to move them or where to move them. But right now, we don't, and it's going to cost quite much because you're going to, and you can't put them in storage. That's concealing them. That's against the law. And you'll have litigation on this, and litigation will hold up everything. If you will just let the people have a meeting, let us talk about it. We won't have to have litigation. We'll have people coming together and talking about this in a reasonable way, much more reasonable than I'm doing right now, but I'm angry because of the things that I've been seeing going on. I think we, we should just table this thing, but I want to let Commissioner, if there's, I want to, I want to, I want to, I want to move to table this matter because I think we need time to talk about it more.
So definitely, I get to speak at this point, right?
Hmm.
So that, no, that, that was a, a motion to table. Is there a second to the motion to table? Commissioner Jones, I see your hand up.
Again, there was no second. You can't force upon us a second.
No, I'm, I'm asking if that, if he's waving, waving his hand and to say, is that a second? I'm, I'm looking, is there a second to the motion to table?
I'll second it.
So you got, you got a motion and second to table. That's non-debatable, so.
Anybody can go on to maconactionplan.com right now and pull up the papers. All I did.
I thought this was.
No, no back and forth.
You take control.
Hold on. So we got a motion and a second to table? I'll ask the clerk to call the roll so I don't try to misstate anything and how the vote goes. So if you're in favor of tabling this, you'd vote yes to the motion to table. If you're opposed to tabling this, you would vote no. So the clerk will call the roll.
Yes, sir. On the motion to table, Commissioner, Mayor ProTillman, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Allen, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Bivens, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Jones, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucas, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Schlesinger, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Shepherd, how do you vote? Commissioner Shepherd, could you unmute, please?
There he go.
There he is.
He's there.
Yeah.
Yeah, he hasn't unmuted.
Yeah, Commissioner Shepherd, could you unmute, please?
Go to the next person.
Thank you.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Watkins, how do you vote?
No with rights.
Commissioner Wynn, how do you vote?
Absolutely, yes.
By a vote of four to five, the motion to table fails.
We got four, four, four yes to five no, the motion to table fails. We'll go on, we'll go on with discussion then. Commissioner Watkins, I'm going to call on you next because you're trying to talk and, and respond to some of the things that Commissioner Wynn said. So I'll call on you, then I'll go to Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, sir. I guess firstly, in response to a few things, the Macon Action Plan is currently online. I believe it's maconactionplan.com. Find it easily at UDA website as well. And scroll it and determine for yourself. I'm sure there is a hard copy or several different versions of a graphic presentation that exists, but the current online version is as presented in, in both me and the county attorney's presentation, and I stand by that. Couple other things that I want to, I, I want to mention as it pertains to the removal, removal of the statue. What, no, first, so I spend a lot of time when it comes to Macon County Commission drafting, writing, and presenting policy to our body. So much, so I would say I'm second only to the mayor. Sometimes it's about statues. Sometimes it's about alcohol license, and sometimes it's about light. It can be about anything. I think we've got a few big items on the agenda today, including the statue. I am not the chair of the Public Safety Committee. Commissioner Wynn, you are. Before that, Commissioner Shepherd was. And just check the agenda. You guys call very few public safety meetings for us to discuss this issue of crime that's so important. Matter of fact, the only time.
No, 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 no. Commissioner Watkins, please address your comments to the chair and don't, don't attack on my line, my line of fellow commissioners, please.
Yes, and I, and I'll get back on some, I apologize. To the subject of the monuments, I want to mention that the Sons of the Confederate Veterans Camp 18 wrote a, a, a letter to us expressing many, many concerns. And in listening to the public comments about the statues, I have a very strong opinion that I take to be fact on why that statue was erected, having to do with upholding some oppression and a symbol of that. And several others in the community believe it to be a memorial honoring the dead soldiers, some of which were innocent and belittling to the, the practice or system of slavery. Forever, we're going to disagree on that issue, I believe. There's no, there are not enough. I think we're just going to disagree on that. But I do recognize and have enough sense to understand that whether or not I agree with the reason that it is important to these individuals is a symbol. And I think the Sons of the Confederacy are also aware that it is a hotbed issue, and I think they understand that the black community has legitimate grievances and have provided us a path. The idea, I think that was, that they spoke loudly on is the idea of not putting it in storage, creating a plan to move the statue from point A to point B in one fell swoop. And that is something that I can support because I think that is the spirit of what we wanted to do anyway. And so I, I support that idea of figuring out a way to make that happen and holding off on the movement of the statue, understanding that we need to get the foot pedal stool and placement together for the new location. I think that is fair. I wanted to speak on the money aspect of it. When I first proposed this original item, this was an $80,000 proposal. That is the total cost based upon, I believe, carp memorial services or whatever, moving company of what it would cost to do such a, move a Confederate, move this large statue, $80,000. I have agreed to many or all of the mayor's concessions that drive the total price tag up to $5 million. But I also understand that a lot of this money are things that the commission has approved before and has agreed to many a times. The 1.1 million dollars for the roundabout has always been considered as part of the the Central City Commons Project. That has always been a consideration, and we were always talking about funding that as part of that hotel development that has still not come to fruition, using that roundabout as well as doing a lot of stormwater work in that area. We have contemplated doing with our. We have contemplated doing with our splotch dollars and prove such. So that funding, one point one million already exists. We've always talked about improving Rosa Parks Square Park. Um, and we've always talked about using the proceeds from the sale of the Willie C Hill Annex Building to fund said park improvements. And that amount of sale was nine hundred, I mean, a million dollars, um, nine hundred of thousand of which I think is available to be allocated for what we've always said that we were going to do, which is improve that part. And it's my understanding that to date, uh, private sources, the, uh, private sources in our community have raised or have pledged or received pledges of about one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the removal of that statue and improvements to the area. Um, and as in short order, which is more than enough to cover the cost of, again, what would be eighty thousand dollars worth of removal. Um, there's still a big gap between this, this two million dollars that I just mentioned and the total of five million that the mayor has mentioned for the project. Um, and he even needs to answer some questions to me as to why Rosa Parks Square would cost. At one point, I thought he said three million dollars. But that's something to talk about later. I would like to point out again that two million dollars in government money of projects and improvements have always been considered and are inside of this mix. And we, again, the sons of the Confederates, Confederacy's ideas of not placing the statue in storage, I agree with. I think the mayor agrees with, and there is no conflict there, at least with me. Um, so yeah, I, I, I'll yield the rest of my time, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Watkins. Let's go to Commissioner Jones now.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I've thought a lot about this. I always try to rethink issues. And I've read the letter from Commander Stevens from the Sons of Confederate Veterans. I appreciate his attitude. I appreciate Commissioner Watkins' attitude as well, as far as, uh, that. But I'm still not in favor of moving the statue, the statues. And, you know, the letter from Commander Stevens makes me feel a little bit better about that. And, and really what bothers me, maybe we'll talk about the money part in just a minute. But I, I talked about before, and I want to repeat this for the public who maybe didn't hear it before, because we have some historical markers right here in Macon Bibb County. And we go back to twenty sixteen when this board, I was a descending vote, but this board approved a plaque that memorialized, it came from the diocese, Episcopal Dioceses in Atlanta. For some reason, they were compelled to come to Macon to bring a, a plaque here. And it talked about, uh, four human beings, black Americans that were lynched supposedly at the Douglas Theater site and an unknown person. Uh, but then they added up to sixteen, which covered people in middle Georgia. But I, you know, we talk about, and the whole, the whole world is sensitive and offended. And, and I see that and I recognize that. We're just a sensitive place to live these days, it seems. But I was offended by that plaque. I was offended that we wanted to bring something in new that memorialized a horrendous act of lynching a, another human being. So that bothered me. But it was voted and approved on by this board because it was important to history. And then we talked, I talked about the terminal station and, and, and if you face the building from the street over to the left is the, etched in stone up is the top. And we showed pictures of that. And it talks about the colored waiting area. And then down below it is a plaque. And to me, to leave that up, uh, is offensive because it's no way to treat a human being. As you, Mr. Mayor, I, I grew up in the, in the sixties and, and a lot of things went on, including wars like Vietnam that were very unpopular with me. And, but nonetheless, uh, you and a lot of other people did their duty to their country and, and fought. But this plaque at the terminal station, and then, of course, former Mayor Jack Ellis was down there. And not only did he, he wanted to preserve it, not only he not want to remove it, he wanted to preserve it. And he was demanding that the limbs be cut back so that the people could see it. And the reason being, because it's important to history. And, and I think the statues as well are important to history. What we have is a generic soldier, doesn't even have a name. And then we have, we have another statue that was given by the United, United Daughters of the Confederacy, representing a mother and children who, who supported their families while people were off at war. So war is a horrible thing. The Civil War is a horrible, was a horrible stain on America. But we survived it. We didn't create slavery. We did end it. People don't give us credit for that. We did end slavery. We're the only country in the world that has an emancipation proclamation. And, and, and you very well know, many, many countries had the horrible thing of owning people as slaves. So people don't give, give us credit. You know, I still say America is an exceptional country, the most exceptional country. But really, what really bothers me about this, this proposal is the waste of taxpayer dollars, whether they be splotch dollars or whether they be other dollars where we don't know where they're coming from. The nine hundred thousand dollars comes from a, 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 a deal whereby we're, in, in effect, giving this concern twenty million dollars through bonds, bonds or debt. And with the Cotton Avenue Plaza, that's five hundred thousand dollars. And Commissioner Nguyen was right. The, uh, both of those pictures, if you go to the Making Action Plan, it shows a before and an after. And in both before and after photos, there's the statue. So there's the before and, and I think they've got the after. And it's the same ones that I had, that I sent to them. And then we have the roundabout or first and poplar, which is not needed. It's just totally unnecessary. And we, we know a roundabout because it's going to cost a minimum of one point five million dollars. We don't have the money to do that. And then we look at Rosa Parks Square. Rosa, Rosa Parks was a great lady, but it's not about who it's named for. It's about, can we spend three million dollars on a small passive park in front of the government center, AKA city, city hall? That's a lot of money. In the Making Action Plan, there was talk of redoing Rosa Parks Square to the tune of two hundred thousand dollars. That's a lot of money to me. Uh, three million dollars is, to me, just an exorbitant amount of ma, of money that, that we don't have. We don't know where it's coming from. I think, uh, Commissioner Bivens' concerns are real. I, I, I want to do something at Rosa Parks Square. I, I would agree to a statue and making that an even nicer place. But three million dollars is way, way, way beyond, uh, reality for me. That, that it'd have to be some sort of Taj Mahal. We don't have the money to waste. So coming back to what, what we do need, and we did just have our thirty-second homicide, a horrible, horrible factor, horrible statistic to have for our community. We need a hundred and forty more deputies. We need many more firefighters. And for five million dollars, we can hire a hundred new total deputies and firefighters with benefits. And we're at a new, new pay raise. It would be forty thousand dollars a year, comparable with Monroe County. So we've got many more things that are much more important to the public than us having a extravagant park costing three million dollars. So I, I don't, I, I can't support this project because of the amount of money. I'm not in favor of moving the statues, although I, I do appreciate the letter from the Commander of Sons of Confederate Veterans. That leaves the door open for compromise. But I'm against the project because we don't have the money. So if you want to look at it from an economic standpoint, what's more important? Securing our city, our public safety for all our citizens. And we could go a long ways toward that with these dollars or dollars similar to that, rather than spend them on parks and a, and a roundabout that we just simply don't need to that extent, especially on the park. Thank you, sir.
Uh, thank you. I got Commissioner Allen, uh, next. Commissioner Allen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, about a year or so ago, me and, uh, some of the other commissioners were talking about Rosa Parks Square. Also, we talked about the statues. And I hope those commissioners, I'm not mentioning any names, but they are. And my suggestion is leave those statues there and build a statue and have a statue made of Rosa Parks. What she did was unbelievable. But the main person we need a statue of in our city is Dr. Martin Luther King. We don't have one. That's a good compromise. Leave the other two statues there that people want and leave the, uh, build two new statues. We talking about getting money? We can get that money. And that should make everybody happy by doing that. And I hope that was a friendly amendment and I hope people take it and listen to it about it.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Allen. Uh, uh, I, let me, let me, uh, take privilege of the chair, uh, just to say a couple of things since my name has been called and a couple of points have been kind of leveled at me. Um, I would, let me talk about the cost. Um, I think that this project, with its three component phases, is very important to the future of this community. I think we do face issues of crime and issues of poverty. Uh, and we've got to find a way to inspire, uh, the public to work together, to collaborate, to feel included, to feel a part of and to be willing, uh, to sacrifice for the greater good. Um, former Mayor Joe Riley of Charleston, South Carolina often spoke, um, of the public realm and how important it is to have a public realm that people can be proud of, that, that people can see and appreciate and feel like, that's my hometown. This is where I live and I'm proud of it. You inspire people and you get them to work together towards some of these larger, um, problems that we face of poverty, crime, homelessness. Um, so the cost of this entire project, I think, would be money well spent if it would pull together and unite this community in an effort to be inclusive, uh, to show that we are progressive, to show that we are warm and welcoming and inclusive of all members of, of our society. I think that message would be worth its weight in gold, uh, going forward and showing that we want to do the right thing and we want to move forward. So I think the cost of this project is, is money well spent. Uh, and I think would move us in the right direction. And I hope, I hope that the majority of the commission will vote to move forward with this. I think the letter from the Sons of Confederate Veterans was inspiring. Uh, and I think it struck a very resonant chord to say that, look, we, we can go along with this, move it over here to Whittle Park. Let's, let's have the same sort of features over there where we can have it. But it's not in your face in downtown Macon. And more people that come downtown can then, so it, it, it feeds into the idea of the notion of paying homage to heritage, uh, and being part of history, uh, but appropriately placed and not where it has a double meaning, uh, by seen by some as oppression, uh, and seen by others as heritage. So that by separating the location, uh, I think we go a long way. So the cost of this project is a pittance compared to the benefit to be gained and reaped by this community for generations to come. And I hope that tonight we'll start building a better future for Macon and Bibb County. Step forward. Let's look forward. Let's work together and pull this community together. And we can do this together. But no further discussion, I'd like the clerk, call the roll.
I want, I want to say something else, Mr. Mayor, please.
What do I?
May I do so?
Yes, I, I didn't mean to cut off discussion. I thought you were through, but Commissioner Nguyen?
No, no, I, I, I would, I wanted to see, it was a possibility if we could table this. I'm going to say this again because I, I think that if we could have some discussion, I think that there could be a good compromise.
Do too.
Still some issues I'd like to see us talk about. I, I'm willing to listen. I'm willing to do compromise. But I think we need to have discussion. I still think the public needs to have more time to have some input here because we have shortchanged them on their discussion and on their input here. I know that you did what was appropriate tonight. And I commend you for at least having three letters on each side read. But I still think we need to have more discussion. And, and the letter that was written gives us the opportunity to look at our community having that discussion. Will it change what we're going to do tonight? Maybe, maybe not. But I think that discussion would be nice to have. And then you'd have the community feel like they had some input. That's where I stand in there.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Nguyen. And, and I, I just would reply, I believe it was the quote from Dr. Martin Luther King, said that time is never wrong to do what's right, or something along that line. Commissioner Jones, I've got you next.
Yes, sir. And I, I like one of that lines from Dr. Martin King. And I, I agree wholeheartedly. It's just a matter of, as you like to point out, reasonable minds can have, can disagree. And I, I, I like your sentiment of our hometown. And that's the way I think of Macon, Georgia. I've been here for several decades. And my parents are buried here. My son was born here. This is my, this is my town. I love Macon, Georgia. I, if I'm living in a neighborhood, whether it's, uh, whatever level, but especially in the low-income neighborhood. And I've got shootings nightly and weekly, and people are getting shot here and there and yonder. And my government's going to spend five million dollars on a roundabout and making a park much more luxurious than it needs to be. That, that wouldn't sit well with me. I, I want, I want a safe community. I want a safe street. As you've heard me say over and over again, everybody deserves a safe place to live in Macon Bibb County. Everybody deserves that as a minimum. And we don't have it. And we're a hundred and forty deputies short. Our salary is out of whack. And yeah, we're going to address that. But we could be spending five million dollars in a much better way that coincides with the wants and desires of, of all people, of all genders, of all races in Macon Bibb County.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Uh, clerk, clerk will call the roll. And, and if you're in favor of, of passing this resolution, you'd vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no. Uh, Madam Clerk?
Mayor Pro Tim Tillman, how do you vote?
What's the question? You didn't call the question? You didn't read the question?
I'm sorry. The res, the resolution authorizing the mayor to proceed with the Making Action Plan proposal, calling for the creation of a plaza on Cotton Avenue at Second Street and to provide for the relocation of the monument there on to Whittle Park.
Yeah, a, as amended by the committee.
As amended.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen, how do you vote? Commissioner Bivens, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Lucas, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Slessinger, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd, how do you vote? Commissioner Shepherd, would you unmute, please?
He's up there. No.
No. Commissioner Watkins, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Nguyen, how do you vote?
No.
By a vote of five to four, the resolution passes?
Uh, I, I just have it, the resolution, uh, as amended is, is adopted. Uh, that takes us then to item C on the agenda, which is an appointment to the Region Five Emergency Medical Services Council. I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
Resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission, reappointing Chief Marvin Riggins as a member on the Region Five Emergency Medical Services Council and for other lawful purposes.
Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify my saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no? Eyes have it, the resolution is adopted. Uh, next, uh, is an ordinance, uh, to, to, uh, change the word commission to board, um, for the, uh, a tree commission. Uh, but then there was a, a s- a substitute approved by the committee of the whole uh, to change the name, uh, to the Arbor Conservation Board. I believe that's right. I'll ask the clerk to read it by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon, Bibb County Commission to repeal and replace Chapter Seventeen, Article Two of the National Code of Ordinances in Macon, Bibb County to rename the Tree Commission as Arbor Conservation Board to amend the compensation thereof and for other lawful purposes.
Uh, the committee of the whole recommends approval of the ordinance as amended. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance as amended, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no? The eyes have it, the ordinance as amended is adopted. Uh, item, uh, E, um, it, it is, uh, I don't think, we, we just did that. It's the substitute.
Right.
So we'll, we'll skip over that because it was, it was the substitute to, to D, uh, with the Arbor Conservation Board. Uh, so that takes us to item F, which is the renaming of Wise Avenue Park. I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the, the mayor and Board of Commissioners of the County of Macon, Bibb, Georgia to rename the Wise Avenue Park as the Dr. Betty Talbert Park in honor of Dr. Betty Talbert's contributions to the Macon, Bibb County community and for other lawful purposes.
The Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Lucas?
Thank you. Um, I just want to express on behalf of the Talbert family, uh, Reverend Gail, uh, Talbert Smith and the other daughter who is Beverly Fitzhugh and the other members of that family who have talked with me and who have said how pleased they are that we have taken it upon ourselves to remember Dr. Betty Talbert. Uh, she is an icon as far as education in this community. She is in ill health. Uh, but she still plays the piano. And I've said this in committee meeting, I am amazed, um, uh, the kinds of things that people who are, who have some memory deficiency, how they retain certain things. And Dr. Talbert still plays the piano, still, um, sings along with her grands and is just a great lady. And, um, her family again expresses their appreciation for us recognizing her. She, uh, uh, even though there's an exception being made to this because Dr. Talbert is still living, uh, I appreciate that exception and I'm sure the family does as well. So, uh, I urge unanimous approval. And I'd like to ask if each member of this commission would sign on as co-sponsor on this legislation.
Good. Thank you, Commissioner Lucas. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no?
That was unanimous, wasn't it?
That's right. The, the, the eyes have it unanimous and the resolution is adopted. Uh, next, uh, is a, a naming of the, uh, park at Telfair and Elm Street newly created. Uh, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the mayor and Board of Commissioners of the County of Macon, Bibb, Georgia to name the Triangle Park at Telfair Street and Elm Street as the Reverend Jacob Parker Memorial Park in honor of Reverend Jacob Parker's contribution to his community and for other lawful purposes.
Uh, Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion?
Well, you know, we have to say something about Reverend Parker who is, uh, I think he pastored Ebenezer for like 50 years.
He did.
And recently retired. That little stretch of the street there is named the, uh, Reverend Jacob Parker Memorial Way. And so it's so fitting that that little park that's going to beautify the whole area and that is adjacent to the church where Reverend Kennedy pastors now and is in full support of this, uh, that it be named for Reverend Jacob, uh, Parker. He still has that wonderful smile and is the kindest and most helpful and generous person that you'd ever want to meet for those who are, who know him. But for those who don't, just rest assured that, um, it, it should be an honor for us to name something for, for Reverend Parker.
Yeah. Uh, is there further discussion?
Yes, sir.
Mayor Pro Tim?
Uh, when we came into, uh, the new consolidated government, uh, this was my first resolution that I ever, um, put forth and it was the name, uh, that wrote Jacob Parker away. And in the old government, there was, uh, those that had opposed it and fought. The chairman never would even put it on the agenda, uh, because that was whatever reason they had against pastors. And so, uh, I remember my pastor, Eddie Lee Smith, calling me and asking me to sponsor this and could this, uh, move forward. So just to see Jacob Parker, um, still here, still alive, I was honored in, uh, give him the Earl T. Shin Hostel Award. And I actually helped celebrate his birthday over at, uh, Bryant Raines Church, uh, earlier this year. And so, um, Reverend Parker is still out there and just a blessing and, and, and an honor to, uh, see him, uh, receive these accolades while he's here in his glory. So, uh, we thank y'all.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye? Opposed, say no? The eyes have it unanimously. Uh, the resolution is adopted. Uh, uh, next, uh, is an ordinance to approve of the Economic and Community Development Department's budget for ESG home and CDBG funds. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon, Bibb County Commission to adopt the Economic and Community Development Department's budget for FY twenty-one for ESG home and CDBG funds and for other purposes.
Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no? The eyes have it, the ordinance is adopted. Uh, and next is a resolution to put, uh, uh, streetlights on Fleming Drive. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon, Bibb County Commission approving a request for the installation of five streetlights on Fleming Drive pursuant to Article Ten of Chapter Twenty-nine of the Macon, Bibb County Code of Ordinances to be paid from the facility's management budget, services to government, electricity line item and other lawful purposes.
The Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no? The eyes have it, uh, the resolution is adopted. Uh, next is item J, uh, which is, uh, an amendment to the Code of Ordinances to regulate, uh, certain classes of small footprint retail stores. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon, Bibb County Commission to amend certain sections of Chapter Four of the Macon, Bibb County Code of Ordinances for the purpose of categorizing and regulating certain classes of small footprint retail stores to require the sheriff's approval of security camera systems for certain establishments and for other lawful purposes.
Uh, the Public Safety Committee originally recommended approval, uh, but the committee of the whole, uh, amended it, uh, slightly, uh, and recommends, uh, approval, uh, of the ordinance as amended. Uh, all in favor of approval of the ordinance as amended in the committee of the whole signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no? The ordinance, uh, as amended is adopted. Uh, next is, uh, item, item K, which is, uh, a resolution to hire work detail out of McEver, uh, probation detention center. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon, Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute a work detail agreement with the Georgia Department of Corrections in the amount of $345,226 for the purpose of hiring offender work detail labor from McEver Probation Detention Center to be paid from the general fund for public works, streets and road contract labor line item and the general fund parks and beautification contract labor line item and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? He- hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no? The eyes have it, the resolution is adopted.
Oh, no, no. Oh, no.
What?
No, no. I was voting no, I'm sorry.
Oh, we got one no, I'm sorry. Commissioner Watkins wants his right of ways mode soon. Moving on, uh, item L, uh, this is a professional service agreement, uh, uh, with Lanier Plans Incorporated for some playground improvements at Carolyn Creighton Park. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon, Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute a professional services agreement with Lanier Plans Incorporated doing business as Core Gat in the amount of $60,424.30 for the delivery and installation of new playground equipment at Carolyn Creighton Park to be paid from capital improvement funds, recreation, other line items and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I had a question and I should have asked it in, in committee, but is this additional equipment or is it to replace? Does it say? It's new. It, it does say new here, but is it in addition to what's already there?
Commissioner Lucas, I don't know the answer to that question.
I'll, I'll just check record. Oh, is he still here?
Yeah.
No, he's not here.
He's not. Oh.
I've just checked.
We'll have to get that information for you. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no? The eyes have it, the resolution is adopted. That takes us to item, uh, M, uh, which is the acceptance of a juvenile justice incentive grant. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon, Bibb County Commission authorizing the acceptance of a juvenile justice incentive grant from the State of Georgia Criminal Justice Coordinating Council for fiscal year 2020 in the amount of $383,615 with no local match awarded to the Macon Judicial Circuit Juvenile Court in substantially the same form as the hereto attached Exhibit A and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no? The eyes have it, the resolution is adopted. Uh, next is, is a resolution, uh, for professional services from Dunwoody Beeland Architects for Phase Two of the Lake Tobasofki, uh, renovation project. I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon, Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute a professional service agreement with Dunwoody Beeland Architects Incorporated in the amount of $96,000 for architectural and engineering services needed for Phase Two of the Lake Tobasofki renovation project to be paid from 2018 SPOS funds, Lake Tobasofki line item and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no? The eyes have it, the resolution is adopted. Uh, next, uh, is an ordinance, uh, for additional expenditures in the IT, department. And I'll ask the clerk to, to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon, Bibb County Commission to amend the Bibb County IT Department budget by transferring $26,358 from various line items within the IT budget into the computers and hardware line item to fund the purchase of additional hardware to increase the speed of the New World ERP system and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no? The eyes have it, the ordinance is adopted. That takes us to item P, uh, which is a, a resolution for professional services, uh, for the decommission of the legacy mainframe system. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon, Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute a professional services agreement with Ag Tag USA LLC in the amount of $45,000 for the decommission of the legacy mainframe system in the Information Technology Department to be paid from the general fund, information technology, IT legacy system, professional services consulting fee line item and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no? The eyes have it, the resolution is adopted. Uh, next, uh, is a, a resolution, uh, to purchase, uh, some Williams Communications, uh, uh, equipment, um, batteries and power supply adapters. I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon, Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute a purchase agreement with Williams Communication Incorporated in the amount of $53,193.55 for the purchase of batteries and power supply adapters to be paid from the general fund, computer hardware, IT line item and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion?
Yes, sir.
Mayor Pro Tim?
I think we all should support this, but, uh, uh, it's going to be interesting if somebody comes back with more money, something pertaining to this particular issue. So I just want us to pay attention to it. Uh, it's going to be interesting.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Very good. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in.
Right, yes, yes.
Commissioner Winn?
Just, and, and I said this last week, you know, Mr. Lavender works with what he has and what we provide him in the way of equipment and money to run the equipment. And I said, we need to clean house with the equipment and start over. He really needs, he could spend $5 million on the equipment to update what Macon has. And I, I think this is the least we can do is these small items until we can give them a whole new system.
I agree with that.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no? The eyes have it, the resolution is adopted. Uh, next, uh, is, is, uh, an ordinance, uh, to take $61,000 out of fund balance and fix, uh, uh, the roof, uh, at Washington Memorial Library. I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon, Bibb County Commission to approve a budget supplemental and appropriation of $61,000 payable from fund balance for the purpose of funding a roof repair at the Washington Memorial Library and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Jones?
Who was, who was the roofing contractor? Was that discussed?
Uh, if it was, I don't, if it was, I don't remember with, but we may be able to, to pull that up and.
How about Chairman of Operations and Finance? Maybe he knows.
Uh, Mr. Watkins, if you know, I, I'm not.
I think this was just authorizing the money, to be honest with you. I'll pull it up, though.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yeah, Michael, yeah.
Yes, sir. Um, my, my understanding is that the, the money's being paid over to the library to hire the contractor directly, that the contract isn't going through Macon, Bibb County.
Right. Okay. And, and I, I gather that they, right. I, I gather then that they must have been in negotiations with the roof repair company, but I don't know anymore about it.
Is that the way we usually do it?
For outside agencies.
Yeah, especially the library.
I'm not, I'm not questioning the need for the roof, Commissioner, but what I am.
I mean, that's not uncommon. They're an outside agency. They're not a direct, um, I mean, that's not uncommon, they're an outside agency, they're not a direct governmental, they're not us.
There are good roofers and not so good roofers, so that's the reason for my question.
Did you have a preference?
He can't.
I can tell you two or three that I wouldn't use, yeah.
Don't do, don't do that, okay. All right, so, so we, the Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the ordinance is adopted. Next is item S, and that's an accountability court grant and receiving that with a match, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the acceptance of a council of accountability courts judges, state of Georgia grant award from the state of Georgia Criminal Justice Coordinating Council for fiscal year 2021 in the amount of a hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars with matching funds in the amount of thirteen thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars payable in kind as existing employee salaries awarded to the Macon Judicial Circuit Adult Felony Drug Court program in substantially the same form as hereto attached exhibit A and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. That takes us to item T, which is the acceptance of another accountability court grant for the mental health court, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the acceptance of a council of accountability courts judges, state of Georgia grant award from the state of Georgia Criminal Justice Coordinating Council for fiscal year 2021 in the amount of two hundred and forty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars with matching funds in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars payable in kind as existing employee salaries awarded to the Macon Judicial Circuit Mental Health Court program in substantially the same form as the attached here to attachment exhibit A and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is another acceptance of accountability court grant, this one for the Veterans Court Program, and I'll ask the clerk to read that one by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the acceptance of a council of accountability courts judges, state of Georgia grant award from the state of Georgia Criminal Justice Coordinating Council for fiscal year 2021 in the amount of a hundred and ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars with matching funds in the amount of twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars payable in kind as existing employee salaries awarded to the Macon Judicial Circuit Veterans Court Program in substantially the same form as the hereto attached exhibit A and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is item V, which is an ordinance to appropriate seven hundred thousand dollars for a public awareness campaign, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission appropriating up to seven hundred thousand dollars from fund balance for a public awareness campaign as specified herein and for other lawful purposes.
Human don't have his.
The committee, committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the ordinance is adopted. Next is an ordinance to mandate the wearing of mask in public in Bibb County, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An emergency ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission requiring the use of face coverings in public in response to the COVID-19 pandemic and for other lawful purposes.
Uh, the committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Mr. Win, I've got, I've got you first.
Yes, sir, I just want to make sure, this says requiring, and that's, that's a little bit short of mandating, is that my understanding of this wording?
No, ma'am, I think the attorney clarified that and said that it ordered, it ordered people to wear a mask, which was the same as a mandate. Let me ask county attorney.
Yeah, this would order, subject to, if you did not follow it, a fine, so that's, it's a mandate. You got, subject to exceptions, just to go over it again, because I think this is important for y'all to, and it orders all residents and visitors of Macon Bibb County to wear a face covering over both the nose and mouth at all times while outside their homes or places of residence, and there's some exceptions to that, primarily if you're under ten years of age, if you're in your car with other, either by yourself with other persons living in your own residence, when you're exercising outdoors, when you're eating, drinking, and smoking, when wearing a face covering materially causes or aggravates a health condition, or when wearing a face covering would prevent receipt of personal services such as medical, dental, or care services. Let me say one more thing I did not say earlier, and I meant to. It accepts from this also the requirement, I'll read it verbatim, the requirement to wear a face covering shall not apply to persons who are within religious establishments, provided however that all such persons are strongly encouraged to wear a face covering. So if you're in a church or a religious place, you're not required to wear one.
So if I'm walking across the parking lot of Kroger, I have to have a face mask on, is what this?
That is correct.
Out in public airspace, I have to wear a face mask.
Under this ordinance, yes, ma'am.
Oh, so is that in conflict with the governor's orders?
Well, that's the question that's litigated in Atlanta, and just so y'all have this, the governor's order specifically says that people are not mandated, not mandated, although they're strongly encouraged to wear masks. This one says, ours says as well, if this passes as well Savannah, Athens.
Atlanta.
Anna.
And nineteen others.
And, and many others that have come on in the last couple of days say that you are mandated to wear masks with certain exceptions. So to that extent, they're not the same. The question of whether it violates the governor's order is being litigated right now in Atlanta and has not been decided.
All right, I don't know, so you help me. What does it mean for the governor to sue the city or the county? Like, what actually is happening there?
Well, the governor saying in his lawsuit against the mayor of Atlanta and the city council members of Atlanta is that they exceeded their authority by mandating masks, which were inconsistent with his order, and doing several other things about restricting social gatherings and things like that that were inconsistent from his perspective with his order. So he's asking the court in Atlanta, Superior Court of Fulton County, to stop the enforcement of the, that ordinance in Atlanta. That's what that case is about.
Okay, but is there any, gonna be an enforcement, and Commissioner Watkins is alluding to what I wanted to know too. So you sue the city of Atlanta, what does that mean?
Means if he, if he, if it means if he wins, that action by the city of Atlanta is declared illegal, cannot be enforced, and is not effective, and you, and if the court declares what the governor wants, that would mean that no city or county, at least if it goes to a court of appeals and the court of appeals rules in favor of the governor, that no city or county would be able to vary from or be inconsistent with or be different from his executive orders. But that's the question that's being litigated right now.
Okay, other than that, is there any other consequence? Is there a fine, or is there some monies that are, I, I don't understand what the true consequence is.
Well, the consequence of, if the governor wins would be, he would establish that he has the right to determine when people, what safety measures to use to combat the pandemic.
People live or die.
If, if, if the governor loses, then in that city of Atlanta case at least, then the city of Atlanta and other jurisdictions would have more authority than he thinks they should have to mandate measures locally, including imposing fines for people. In our case, for example, if somebody, if this passes, who was not wearing a mask and violated this ordinance, would be subject, if they were cited, to a fine.
And so, one more thing, it's of the governor's orders, if the governor wins, then would those fines be enforced?
No.
Okay.
Commissioner Jones, I've got you next, and then Commissioner Watkins, I hear you trying to ask the question, and I'll get you that. Commissioner Jones?
Yes, sir, I've been trying to raise a question during the free-for-all there, but here's, here's my, you know, I'm, I wish Governor Kemp had put out his mandate but gave municipalities the authority to be less or more strict. I wish he had done, the governor of Oklahoma did that, and I thought that was the better path to take. So, I, I don't agree with this one in that I also believe in liberty and freedom, and I know it makes us all feel good to say, well, we're gonna require you to wear a mask, but if I'm walking across from my car to Kroger or to Publix or wherever, I don't feel like I should have to wear a mask in an open space outside. And in fact, it could be even detrimental to your health to wear too much, especially if you're outside, but. So, and, and then I want to know, what is the fine, and how are you gonna enforce the fine?
I, I think, I think, I think county attorney can give us the answer to that. I think, I think it imposes a fine of twenty-five dollars on the first offense, fifty dollars on the second offense, and a hundred dollars on the third and subsequent.
That's correct. Under the terms of what the mayor said, it's twenty-five for the first offense, fifty dollars for the second offense, and a hundred dollars for the third offense. And as to your second question, Commissioner Jones, the sheriff of Bibb County, we did not have a municipal police force. It is the sheriff of Bibb County is our county police force, so he would have the discretion to enforce any ordinance that we pass. He is a separate governmental entity in effect from us, so that's, he, he would, it would be on him and his deputies whether to what extent they would enforce this, under what circumstances they would enforce it.
Well.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Jones.
I mean, we certainly have to take it seriously. I do personally, and hopefully everybody else does as well, but I don't see deputies fining people, and I don't, I don't believe that you would have to wear a mask outdoors. I can see it in a public building, I understand that, that makes sense, but I'd really like to offer a friendly amendment to Mr. Allen's saying that you're not required to wear it outdoors.
It is, I think it's my.
Was it yours? I'm sorry.
Because he declined to sponsor it.
Okay, well, I'll offer it to whoever, whoever the sponsor.
I, I don't accept that.
Okay, you're right.
Commissioner, Commissioner Watkins got you next.
Yeah, so, and still, I was still kind of interested in the concept of being sued by the governor. Worst-case scenario, uh, due, we passed this tonight, and the governor wakes up in the morning and he decides to sue the Macon Bibb County because we passed a similar law to the Atlanta. What does that do for your office or our county? Little or much?
Say again?
I say, in the scenario, we passed this tonight, and the governor decides to sue Macon Bibb County as well. And I guess he could extend his lawsuit to all other counties that have passed a similar thing, or?
Correct, he could, he could do that. It's his right to try to overturn or establish his authority in other areas. As a practical matter, that's why I think why he's picking Fulton County, because it both has the mask mandate, but also has some other things as well that he thinks, he thinks are inconsistent with his order. To answer your question, if he sued us, I would defend it, and that's my job, and that's what would happen. And so, but I'm not the judge, and they would be, that you would decide who's right and who's wrong. I, I don't believe it at that.
Very good, Laurie.
Is, is there further, is there further discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, one last point. I'm in favor of wearing masks. I, I am not in favor in, in public buildings. I, so, you know, you put me in the position where, okay, constituents want required mask. I've heard from many of those, and I understand that, and I agree with that, but not in an outdoor capacity. So I can, I can, I can say yes and be a hypocrite and not wear it as I'm walking into Kroger, and then if a deputy happens to come up and says, well, you passed that, Commissioner Jones, but we're gonna fine you because you voted for it, and you're not, you're not abiding by the law. So I'm, I'm gonna vote no based on that one component, knowing that it's gonna pass. I don't see sheriff deputies issuing fines, although I'm glad, I'm glad it reads minimal amounts. That's a good thing. Five hundred dollars would have been absurd. So I'm glad it reads minimal amounts, but I'm not in favor of requiring the public to wear masks outside.
And one more comment, please, follow up.
I had my hand up.
I, I'm sorry, Commissioner Lucas, I did not see your hand up, but let me go to you first, and then I'll follow, follow up with Commissioner Win.
All right, thank you. Um, I think as a follow-up, if this does pass, and I do hope that it will, since your Board of Health has taken the position that it should pass, and we are poised to initiate our own legal action on this, because we feel that strongly about it, and we are, from what I understand, in a red zone, and I think Spencer and some others could explain exactly what that means, but usually when something is red, there is need for great alarm, and all of you have gotten the statistics. We made sure that you were getting those daily, and thank you, Janice, for getting those out to everybody. We are serious about this at the Board of Health, and the other thing that we've got to think about is, we don't know everything about this virus. We don't know, the latest information says that droplets remain in the air for an indeterminate amount of time, and you come by and you breathe in those droplets, then you are infected. So, why would you put any kind of restrictions? Well, there are certain restrictions on the mask and everything, but we need to have people in masks as much of the time as we possibly can, you know, kind of encourage them. And I know this is not gonna be perfect, but I think if we as a governmental entity say that we feel like this is a serious enough situation, and our infection rates are going up, our death rates are going up, we've got a makeshift hospital down there across from my church, Stuart Chapel, and across from the medical center for all those, those folks, and I would hate for us to have to bring in refrigerated trucks to handle the dead, as some places have had to do. So, red zone means something. We are in a red zone, and we have to do everything we can to make sure that we say we care. I don't care how foolish anybody else is, we as governing, the governing body, we have to say that we care, and I think this is one way of doing it, and one other thing I wanted to suggest is that if we could get with someone or if we could pay for it ourselves out of the seven hundred thousand dollars, if we could get signs that we would make available for anybody who needed those, and that would be everybody, all businesses and stuff, many of them already have them, but if we could have a sign that says that Macon Bibb has adopted this, that says that all folks have to have the mask, that certainly would help with spreading the word, and I think ninety percent of our folks will comply because they will now say that our governing body has sounded the alarm, and we better comply to save our lives. So, that's, that's all I wanted to add to that. And I know we can't, the enforcement's going to be kind of, kind of shaky, and I know we're in litigation, but I think we need to make the statement. And very seldom do you get over 100 people giving you reactions as we have gotten on the mandatory mask. So, I think that's a sign of something that we, people really want us to do. Thank you.
Commissioner Wayne, Commissioner Wayne, I got you, got you next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I guess I share the sentiments of Commissioner Jones, just, just because I don't like the out in public requirement, because I see people walking on the street all the time in my neighborhood for exercise, which is good for you, and there is no one around them, no one around them to have any droplets get on them or get in their air. But, and I, I know, Duke, you're probably going to say that we can do exercise and not be part of it. But do you consider, some people just consider walking around the street, just walking, not really exercise. But I just don't like the public aspect of it. I think that it's too far reaching, and I am so serious about masks that if I attended a political event, I would be wearing my mask, especially when I was in close, close proximity to someone, not a foot distance, I would wear my mask. And there's going to be a lot of political things going on now, and parties and gatherings. And there's no way to, to stop people from not wearing a mask when you want to talk. You're not going to wear a mask. I just think it's stupid not to wear a mask. That's just me. I wear it all the time. I've been, I've been washing my hands, I've been social distancing. I turn my face if I walk past somebody that even comes close to me that doesn't have a mask. So, I don't understand why people won't do it. I just don't like adding this when you should have good common sense to do it. And, and I just think that we're going to shock our public when they start getting fines given to them and tickets given to them for doing this. There'll be some problems with that, but I am wearing masks.
People don't like taking shots.
Hold on, hold on. Commissioner Watkins, and I've, may, may have somebody else too.
You do. I'll make your list.
Was that Slessinger?
Yes, Slessinger, Watkins, and Allen, and Jones.
Let's take them in that order, please. Slessinger, Watkins, and Allen.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I think we're in a unique position where we can actually do something about this. I, I like, I guess all of you, you know, have been, you know, watching the TV. I've seen community leader after community leader get criticized for not doing enough on behalf of the constituencies that they represent. So, I think it's in the community's best interest. I think it's in our best interest as a governing body to do everything that we possibly can to minimize the, the spread. Certainly, we know that there are going to be people who conform to this. There are going to be people who do not conform to this, but it wasn't because we didn't mandate it, to use that word, and, and didn't try to do the right thing to keep as many people in our community as healthy as possible. So, I'm going to be, you know, voting for this. I know it's, you know, not perfect. I don't believe that the police are going to be hiding around every corner throughout the county to give tickets to, to, to people. But it's just the thing that we really need to do to keep as many people that we, as we represent, healthy moving forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Slessinger. Commissioner Watkins got you next, and then Commissioner Allen.
Sir, thank you. We are a lawmaking body, so is the state, and making laws that try to make our people safer and improve quality of life. This issue right here, using an analogy, reminds me very much of seatbelts. I guess in the early 80s and 90s, seatbelts, having a seatbelt on was not a mandatory thing. Uh, at some point, the state legislature passed a seatbelt law, and countless, if not millions of lives have been saved because people not wear seatbelts a whole lot more. And when people don't wear seatbelts, we all frown because, you know, it's just not safe. Texting while driving, I think, is a very recent one as well. Lot of conversation about whether or not, and this was very recent, about whether or not the state should have made it illegal or not. But the fact remains, people texting while driving was getting people killed. We passed the law, and we're doing better about that as a society. And it's a direct relation to the laws that were passed. And I just got to think that the same, if it's true that masks save lives and reduce contact, that us passing a law long-term is much better off than not doing it. I doubt very seriously that the sheriff ever arrests or tickets a whole lot of people on this issue. But the fact is, the way that we show force is making a law. Right now, to date, I don't think we're writing a whole lot of texting while driving or seatbelt tickets. It does happen sometime, but it is by far they're not going through stringent measures at this time to enforce those laws. That's the sheriff's discretion, I think, to give, our sheriff at least, gives a lot of warnings for these type of things. And I think we could expect similar, but it does help us make the point. So, that's why I'm for making it a mandate.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Watkins. So, Commissioner Allen?
You know, I'm, thank you, sir. You know, I'm voting against it due to the fact it's a, it's a law from the governor, and that, you know, he's got to change his mind. But I also believe this, Mayor. The fact is that we're going to have $700,000 worth of masks. Those, or not masks, but advertisement. If we can get that same amount of masks, put them into fire stations like we did the water during the flood, during, back in the early 90s, and knocked out the water station. And the people kept coming to the fire stations to get them. We could keep them out of who gets how many, so they won't get over abundance. We can kick this in the bud. I really think we can. But we, you know, we got to keep trying to prod the, the governor to make it a mandate. I've called him today. As a matter of fact, I've called Austin Scott's office today. But until it is mandated, until it's, you know, that we have to do it, I can't vote for it. All I can do is say, try to get them as many masks as I can out to the people.
Uh, thank you, thank you, Commissioner Allen. Is there further discussion? If not, I'm going to ask the clerk to call the rule, because I think it's a little bit, little bit too close for me to call, huh?
Commissioner Jones.
Commissioner Jones, did you have something else, sir?
Yes, sir, one last comment. I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to vote for it. I, I like, I like the spirit of the, of the legislation. I, I want the record to say that I do not like the component of being required to wear a mask outside, whether you're exercising or not. Of course, I guess if you were walking across the lot of Kroger, you might could say, I'm exercising. I'm, I'm against that component, and I'm not in favor of fines. And, and, you know, I believe in liberty and freedom, but I, I appreciate the spirit of the legislation, and I, my constituents have asked for it, so I'll vote yes.
Very good, sir. All right, let me get the clerk to call the rule.
Commissioners, if you will, please.
And, and, right, and, right. And, and let me just say, if you're for the resolution, you'd vote yes. If you're opposed to the resolution, you'd vote no. Now, Madam Clerk.
Yes, I'll be calling it by district. Commissioner Wayne, how do you vote?
Abstain.
You can't do that. I think our rules say, you've got, you've got, you've got to, you've got to vote. And if you don't say, if you don't say anything, it counts as a yes.
I thought it counted as yes, is what our rule says.
Commissioner Jones. With his companies, I think.
She can abstain.
Now, y'all are getting, y'all are getting me, y'all are getting me so confused. Uh, Commissioner, Commissioner Wayne, how do you, how do you vote? Vote your conscience, ma'am.
I said abstain.
You can't abstain.
You can't, she can abstain under our rules, that counts as a yes vote.
Right.
I know that.
She can abstain.
Okay, so she, she votes, yeah, she votes, she is. Okay.
No, she votes abstention, but that's.
Abstention.
It counts as a yes.
Okay, moving on. Commissioner Slessinger, how do you vote?
You asked for it. Get me to vote first.
Commissioner Lucas, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones, how do you vote?
Yes, but with the notation in the record as I spoke, please.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Bivens, how do you vote?
Yes, and I agree with Commissioner Jones.
Okay. Commissioner Allen, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Shepherd, would you unmute, and how do you vote?
Need some help?
There you go.
I got it, finally.
How do you vote?
What I'm voting on.
You're voting on, on the requirement to wear masks.
Just abstain.
I vote, uh, no.
Commissioner Watkins, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Tillman, how do you vote?
Yes.
All right, my vote of seven to, seven to two, the eyes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Uh, finally, item X on, on our agenda under old business is the, the, the resolution to agree to levy, if necessary, the additional millage requested by the Board of Education to pay the bonds they want to issue based on the ELOST. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
Resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to assure compliance with the Constitution of the State of Georgia by assessing and providing for the collection of a direct annual tax efficient to pay the principal of an, of an interest on general obligation bonds to be issued by the Bibb County School District in the aggregate principal amount of $15,550,000 as authorized at an election held for that purpose on November the 5th, 2019, pursuant to and in conformity with the Constitution and statutes of the State of Georgia and for other lawful purposes.
The Committee of the Whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. I propose saying no. The eyes have it, and the resolution is adopted. That's the end of our old business. There are only a couple of items. Hallelujah, right. It's, they're, they're only a couple of items of new business. Uh, the first is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the United States Tennis Association in the amount of $30,000 to be used by the Macon-Bibb County Recreation Department at the John Drew Smith Tennis Center. Uh, I'm going to refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. The second one is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of a build-it-forward grant from the United States Tennis Association Southern in the amount of $30,000 to be used by the Macon-Bibb County Recreation Department at the John Drew Smith Tennis Center. Sounds an awful lot like the first one, it's just a different grant. That is, I'm going to refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Those are the only two items that have come down thus far this week from the, from the attorney's office. But please check your agenda that'll come out on Friday afternoon for additional items that'll be coming up for our committee meetings, uh, next Tuesday morning, the 28th, beginning at 9:00. By Zoom, we're still going to be zoom, zooming for our committee meetings next, next week.
Mr. Mayor. It's, it's.
Oh, that's, that's exactly right. Well, at least we've read, at least we've read the new business, and Michael, Michael has public comments on non-agenda items. So, y'all, whole time, and, and now, and, and let's let, let the public speak, uh, non-agenda items. Michael, what, what have you got?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's, there's three more. There is a, um, non-agenda item from Andrea Glover, who writes, allocations of funds to reduce gun violence is important. All community-based interventions should be research-based to ensure the validity and the best attempt at being successful. Gang violence is not gun violence. The average age of the perpetrator of violence in our community is 33 years of age. The, the why is important, so we can solve the what. Please propose stepping in and providing targeted interventions that don't, don't lead us down the wrong path. Thank you. And then we have two comments on, um, the Bibb County tennis program. Um, this comment is from Nancy Williams. She writes, "Due to taxpayer support, Macon-Bibb County has some of the best public tennis facilities in the state. For those unable to, to afford a private club, Macon's tennis facilities are an affordable way to enjoy the game and get exercise outdoors. Users of Macon's courts were shocked to find that while the tennis facilities were closed during the early weeks of the COVID shutdown, management of our courts was turned over to the private Atlanta-based company of Agape. Agape is now free to manage our courts and all of the profits that come with that, giving lessons, summer camps, junior and adult programs, pro shops, and racket stringing as they see fit, and pocket all the profits. Yes, you understand correctly, they are making money, lots of it, off of taxpayer-funded facilities. County's agreement and contract with Agape was hurriedly signed during the early days of the COVID shutdown, which County Commissioners sponsored and supported this takeover of our tennis courts. There seemed to be an almost purposeful omission of public notification and input about this decision. Macon citizens are requesting the county review its contract with Agape to see if Macon-Bibb's best interests have been served." Signed Nancy Williams. And then the final non-agenda item comment. Let me see. Here it is. This is from Frank Seymour. He writes, "To the Honorable Macon-Bibb County Commissioners for the July 14th meeting, many of us in the tennis community believe the tennis contracts with Agape and its CEO should be canceled because bringing them in at the beginning of the COVID-19 pandemic was unfair and without public opinion from those of us who actually play and pay fees at these public facilities. Furthermore, it is a general consensus that the Macon-Bibb County tennis manager needs to be terminated because her double-dipping is of no financial benefit to Macon-Bibb County. In fact, her salary and benefits package cuts into public funds, causing Macon-Bibb County to lose money for a job she can't possibly perform on days she does not report to Macon-Bibb County or reports to the Cab County Tennis Center instead. To the best of our knowledge, even the summer camp days' hours for middle Georgia children have been reduced. Please do not remove the current hard-working, unselfish, Macon-Bibb County-loving tennis coordinators and other staff with approximately five to 20 years of service in these parks, because they live here in Macon and in middle Georgia. We are not so concerned with the outsourcing of services to, to Agape Tennis Academy and its CEO as we are beneficial to all Macon-Bibb constituents, employees, independent contractors, consumers, and Macon-Bibb County's financial growth. Commissioners, in the event the tennis manager, Amy Pazehanek, resigns, please bifurcate our argument, because only part of the public concerns will be moot. We humbly request that nothing new be negotiated with Agape, and that you issue a fair compromise in the form of a resolution as follows. A resolution to clarify that Agape Tennis Academy shall only have 15 courts total between John Drew Smith Tennis Center and Randy Stevens Tennis Center under the original contract with Macon-Bibb County. Thereby, Macon-Bibb County will keep all our tennis facility coordinators, as well as other tennis center staff, in their respective positions. Furthermore, Macon-Bibb County will grandfather Coach Sabotka, Coach McTyson, Coach Pharoah, and all other coaches working in their private capacities prior to Agape's arrival, and paying court fees back into these tennis centers. These independent contractors will not be forced to sign Agape contracts because with over 50 tennis courts, there's room enough for everyone. Thank you in advance for your consideration and/or actions taken on this important matter. Signed Frank Seymour." Mr. Mayor, that concludes the public comments that we received for this.
Good. I understand we've got a point of personal privilege request by Commissioner Lucas.
And I'd like one too.
My, my question involved, and I guess I, I was trying to find an item on the agenda that would lead us into a discussion of, of any, uh, information on the tennis, since we have received a lot of, you know, correspondence on it, and I know that the administration has been working on that, that issue. And so, I'd just like to know where we are on that. And, um, are we having committees next week?
We are by Zoom.
Oh, okay. So, uh, should that item be on an agenda?
We, we, we can certainly, we can certainly add it, and, and it may, it may be appropriate to add it to the Committee of the Whole, because I understand I got two different committees, I got two different committees that are claiming jurisdiction over it. So, we may, we may need, I, but we, we, we'll, we'll get you an update, one way or the other.
We'll, we'll update, and, and probably, I'd probably recommend going to executive session for that discussion, at least a part of it.
Okay.
Okay. And Commissioner Wayne, and then Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I first want to say, I appreciate the fact that you let some comments be read tonight, both before, with, with the agenda items and the non-agenda items. I, I have a question, because.
I have a question because people still feel like they're being left out. We've got the commission chamber out there where you are right now set up with the seats marked for public, public participation. Basically, they've been marked off every six feet and people can come in and make comments. I don't see with our technology why we can't let 10 people come in at a time and sit in those seats socially distanced and wearing masks and still make their comments one at a time and leave the chamber and put their masks on. I don't see why we can't do that. I mean, we've got the technology to do it. We've got the chamber set up. We've already had one public forum about the church when they wanted to use the church that was going to be used for some other purposes. We had people in here. Why can't we keep doing that? I don't understand that. That's my my question to you to consider in the future so that people will not feel like they're still being left out.
Thank you, Commissioner Win. Commissioner Jones?
Yes, so just to say, I I welcome the tennis conversation. The administration is working on some things and they can provide some answers that none of us have. But there's a lot of misinformation between my fellow commissioners have about my role that I played or didn't play. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna clarify that for you next Tuesday. So I think that's the right place to put it because it does belong in facilities. But if you have it on the Committee of the Whole, then that's fair.
Good, very, very, very good indeed.
As long as we discuss it.
That's why I feel. Mayor Pro Tim, tell me, going for personal privilege?
I wanted to yield to everybody and make sure that everybody had an opportunity to speak. I got a couple of things that I love to close us out. Number one, I don't think, I I agree with Commissioner Win that we ought to allow the public a better opportunity of speaking. Also, you know, I I don't think we ought to put it in anybody's hand to pick and choose who's going to make comments. Tucker Carson on Fox News, head writer, was a a ghost person for years. And so I don't want us to choose. I think we ought to get a bucket. And those people that want to speak, we're going to read their comments, put it in a bucket in front of everybody, pull their names. Because that's a fair process if we're not going to allow them there. The final thing I just want to share is, I want everybody to go home, because it's been a long meeting, to think about. If you're at home, or look up the word tolerate. And I want to bring up the word tolerate because it's a very important word about a discussion we've had tonight about a few things. I want us just all in 2020 to just imagine that every police officer or deputy sheriff that has shot and killed an African-American man or woman or boy, that we decided in 2020 to put up a monument in their honor. In 2020, that would not be tolerated because times are different and times are changed. But in 1889, that was a group of folks that lived in an era that tolerated statues. In 1956, there was a group of folks that tolerated statues. And in today's society, we would not tolerate statues put up by police officers that shot and killed anyone. And in today's time, we wouldn't tolerate statues. Times have changed. So however we do it, we voted on it, we have to, and we need to move on. But the word is tolerate. And we can no longer tolerate injustices. So if you want to be oppressive to those that you represent and you speak up, when you begin to show up at anti-gun rallies, balloon releases, M.C. King annual marches, then you can begin to say to your constituents in this community that we are truly coming together. But if not, we're going to continue to have these heated discussions on topics that sometimes have to be had. So tolerate. Look it up, understand it, and know that in today's society, things have changed and we can no longer tolerate what's happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. And with with that having been said, no, no final points of personal privilege requested. We've reached the end of our agenda.
We need to come in and speak. I think we still need to have people come in and speak. That's my final point.
All right, all right. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
They're moved.
And without objection?
Good night.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.